Okay, Linda, we don't have any communications on the agenda. Is there anything else that's come in in the interim?
Just a few reminders. No emails have come in, but just wanted to remind everyone, if anyone's interested in filling out a petition to apply to become a board member, to have their name put on the ballot, petitions are available in the school district's business office. They are also available, I think, online and at the county clerk's office. The deadline for submitting petitions is July 31st at 4:00 PM in the county clerk's office. Also, I wanted to remind board members, if anyone is interested, the annual New Jersey School Boards Workshop, which is held in Atlantic City, will be on October 23rd through 26th. And anyone who is interested in attending, please contact my administrative assistant. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And just as a reminder, in July and in August, we don't do our normal format of workshop session and a voting session. We just do one meeting in July, one meeting in August. So we will be voting on agenda items tonight. So with that, we have next on the agenda, the approval of minutes for the public workshop and executive sessions from June 12th, 2017, and the regular public and executive sessions from June 19th, 2017. Did anybody have any questions or concerns about any of those minutes? Nope? Okay, seeing none, Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Could we get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Linda, could I get a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Magziner?
Yes.
Ms. Fadendi-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Rosleritz?
Yes.
Okay, and with that, we will move on to Scott's report.
Thank you. The second goal, the second action step of the first part of our strategic plan that the community crafted, has the district looking at incorporating a community-building initiative into our program to help build stronger teacher-student relationships, student-student relationships. And the model that the leadership team and some members of the board and committee identified to adopt, also thanks to input from Dr. Anne Gregory, who's a specialist in the area of discipline equity, is restorative practices. Specifically, we reached out to an organization in Bethlehem called the International Institute for Restorative Practices, IIRP, to come work with our teachers and our leadership team. IIRP is coming next week to conduct a workshop for the principals, the supervisors, and myself. But about three weeks ago, Tanya Lewis, who's here tonight, and I'll officially introduce her in a second, conducted a workshop for a group of teachers from the middle and high school who are going to be turnkeying the training that they received to all of their peers on September 5th and 6th before the kids arrive. So I invited Tanya, all the way from Brooklyn, to come speak to the board about the work she did with the staff. She's also going to talk a little bit about some of the protocols that our kids are going to start seeing and experiencing next year at both the middle and high school. One is often referred to as community-building conferences, and the other protocols referred to as reactive conferences. What we would do if a student offends somebody else in the community, who we want to have restore to the community. And so Tanya's going to talk a little bit about those models, and then I asked her to set aside time for questions from the board about restorative practices. So, Tanya, I'm going to give you the mic and give me your bio.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Hello, everyone, again. I'm Tanya Lewis-Kelly. Usually, I start with doing a circle, and everybody tells me a little bit about themselves, but I won't do that to you today. You're welcome. But let me just tell you a little bit about the experience that I had here, and generally with restorative practices, and what you should be seeing come in September. I had the privilege of working with a group of your middle school and high school teachers who are spectacular, really, they are. And so much so that when I was doing the training, they were asking questions that were two slides ahead at all times. So ultimately, what I did was I threw out the slides, and we had a conversation, because they intuitively knew everything that we were talking about. And we got through every slide, but we did it organically, because they really do get it. And let me explain the "it." The "it," restorative practices, is really an outgrowth of what was specifically called just restorative justice. Restorative justice was just handling issues that were happening in terms of discipline. Restorative practices takes it up another level. It's an emerging social science. And really, what it is, is how do you build the social capital so that you can have the relationships, so that children, adults, anybody that you're dealing with can agreeably disagree? And children's behavior really does rise to the occasion because of the relationships that you have versus you just punishing them. I got involved in IIRP and doing trainings for restorative practices with IIRP, because I have a background in youth development work in East Harlem. And I had what was, we thought, a restorative justice response. We had youth courts. But what we found was that the sanction that we created, it was called Harlem Hard Hats, and it was a community service sanction where young people did their time, and they stayed over time, they built up responsibilities the longer that they worked with us, and they ultimately became leaders in this group. And we found that the longer their sanction was, the better that they did. But it wasn't because they got 20 hours. It was because they had 20 hours of interacting with people, and they built the relationships. And then they wanted to stay. And then they volunteered to work on things like youth court. So that was the pivotal piece, was the relationship building. And that's what I realized was what was missing is if you're punitive, if you're just giving out sanctions, if you're just telling kids, "You did wrong, therefore, you must," it doesn't make a difference. But if you tell kids, "This impacted me, and this is how it impacted me. What are you going to do to help make it better?" And give them that agency, self-agency, they will then make a difference, and they will change. And I saw that without knowing the language behind it. So when I learned about IIRP and I went through their training, it taught me the language. So some of the language that we trained on was based on something called the social discipline window. The social discipline window really is a way for you to determine how do you respond to things? Is it through just control, or is it just through support? And we know that the relationships where there's an authority figure who just gives support without any accountability ends up having chaos. And we know when we just give accountability without any support, you end up losing the connection. So the "with," which is restorative, is giving a lot of support as well as a lot of accountability. And I want you to hear that piece, because a lot of times when we go to schools and you have those folks who are like, "I don't know what this manby-pamby thing is. It seems a little too soft." It's because they think there's no accountability. They think it's just about the support. And we keep on giving you more and more chances, and you keep on messing up. And that's not restorative practices at all. It really is about holding people responsible, but having the conversations so that they can figure out what it is that I can do to fix this. I messed it up, I have to fix it. And to have that kind of conversation, particularly with young people, is really a -- it's empowering for them. They come out feeling empowered, they feel respected, even if they don't get their own way. Because usually, they're not going to get their own way, but they were heard. And so that's the other piece that we talk about, is how do you make sure people feel heard? So another key component that we train on is called fair process. And fair process really gets people to think about, when you are having a disagreement, are you engaging, or are you just listening and waiting for you to give your response? When I'm arguing, I'm not necessarily engaging. I'm waiting for you to say that word that's going to set me off so that I can come back with my response. And then you don't necessarily feel heard, because I'm trying to win. Fair process is not about me shutting you down, but me actually listening. Not necessarily agreeing, but actually listening. And that takes a lot of effort sometimes to listen. And then explaining my position and listening to your position, and then coming up with not just a solution, but what's going to happen if we don't, either one of us don't follow through. So when you do have a young person, that person has come up with, "This is what I'm going to do differently next time." And they don't hold up their end of the bargain, that's the place where you start the next conversation. It's not going back to the first one. Remember, this is what you agreed that you would do. So what happened, and why didn't that work out? And that allows for there to be some accountability there, because I've agreed to it already. And it's them coming up with part of the solution. So that's the second piece that we focused on. And again, your folks got it. They already knew it, this was what they kind of did, they just didn't have the language. And this was about giving everybody the common language, so that when they share with their colleagues, everybody knows what we're talking about. You know, when I was working with young people, my staff, I would say, "Either you got it, or you didn't get it." What's the "it"? If you don't know, then you just don't know. That was how I handled it, because I did not have the language. So this is one of the things that will allow for your district to be really consistent, is everyone will have that language. The other things that we talked about is how we need to interpret responses that we do see. So when you see someone who flies off the handle because of how they handle stress, or how they handle disappointment, or how they handle, we call it affect, when they have a negative affect, how they respond to it might not be the same way you respond to it. Therefore, you will interpret it based on you versus based on them. So you need to be aware of how everyone responds to it. And we talk about four basic ways you can respond to these types of things. One is you attack other. One is that you attack yourself. One, you withdraw. And then one is avoidance. So if I'm a withdrawer, and you're an avoider, and something happens, and I don't see you withdrawing, I might misinterpret that to mean that you don't care. But what you're doing by avoiding is actually showing that it does bother you. And so those are some of the other things that we need to be very mindful of, particularly when we are adults looking at young people. So when we see a young person who isn't looking us in the eye, or we see a young person who is blowing up, or even parents, if we see a parent who's very upset about something, and you're like, "But don't get mad at me, it wasn't me," they're not mad at you. They're responding to that negative affect. And it allows for us to put things in perspective, because really, all of these trainings are about us being more introspective and figuring out what we need to do differently, because you can't change others. But other people will react differently if we respond differently. So restorative practices is really about giving the tools so that we can build the social capital, so we can have better relationships. And then there are certain tools that we have, and I'll share those with you as well, to handle the responsive. When something does go wrong, these are some of the tools you can use. So we say 80% of the time is building up, so that you have that social capital to pull out for the 20% of the responses. Some of the responses that we suggest, one is called affective statements. And it's telling somebody specifically how that behavior impacted me. It's like an "I" statement, but you're very, very specific about the behavior. When this happened, or when you did this, it made me feel X. And some of that is to build up empathy, because, quite frankly, sometimes people don't necessarily, young people in particular, don't really have the strongest empathetic responses to things, so it's helping them to think through it. But it's also helping people to start to identify emotions, because you have to be very authentic about how you felt. We spend a lot of time getting people to get outside of their go-to words. "I felt sad." "I felt mad." It's like, no, how did you really feel? "I felt ignored," or "I felt disrespected," or "I felt disappointed." Like, really get them to start tapping into those things, which also, and you'll be surprised how quickly this connects people. Because when I say, "This is how you made me feel," it's because you matter to me, that's how you were able to make me feel that way, and therefore, that connection's there. Affective statements can also be used in a positive light, when you just see somebody, particularly someone who might not necessarily always do the right thing all the time, and you see them just do something they're supposed to do. Not even something spectacular, but highlighting that and how good that made you feel. That makes an instant connection as well. We then talked about after affective statements are affective questions. And these question cards are something that we give out to every adult. And those question cards will allow for you to have the open dialogue when something has happened, without asking, "Why'd you do it?" Because the universal answer to "Why'd you do it?" is... Mmm. Anytime you ask. So, we don't even go there. Because if I get that response, if I'm thinking about how I respond to things in my compass of shame, it's going to upset me, and then I will just keep on pressing, and then I will get more elevated in my anxiety. So let's not go there. Let's start with just what happened. Tell me what happened. And that gives them the opportunity to just download and share as much of what has happened. It is not for you to actually get to the point of, "I gotcha." It's not about "I gotcha." It's just giving them the opportunity to express what happened. And as they start to hear themselves say what happened, and then the next question's, "So, you know, what were you thinking at the time? What have you thought about since? Who was affected by what it is that you did? And what do you need to do to make things right?" What they will often say is pretty much what you would have said, "All right, your punishment is X." But they're saying it to you, and then they own it, because they said it. And then they're less resistant to doing it, because they came up with it. We also have questions that are really important, that are similar, but they're for the person who's been affected. So we make sure that you always address, if it's two kids, and one child has hurt another, make sure that the child that was hurt gets as much airtime, because they're the ones that usually don't, and they hold on to it. So you ask questions that are similar in getting them to talk, but they're different questions, obviously. It's more about, "What did you think when it happened? And who in your family or your friends have been affected by it? And what do you need to make things right?" And if we can, we can have both of them answer the questions to each other, based on the scenario and the situation. We also talk a lot about how sometimes the adults need to have those second set of questions asked of them. Because it's really important for there to be a lot of restorative work among the adults before we ask the adults to be restorative with the kids. So if I have a student who has been driving me nuts for nine months, I want to be able to talk about how that made me feel, and share that too, because that'll allow me to let it go, and we can start over a new day. And it'd be even better if that student got to hear how that impacted me. Because oftentimes, they have no idea that their behavior is really impacting any adults, because it's their world. So that's the other piece of it that we do talk about. Essentially, it really is about addressing the climate and the culture of your school, and making sure that it feels as close to a family as one can. Make sure it feels like a community, where you might not have a close relationship with everybody, but we all have each other's back. And we all want to hear what each other has to say, and we're going to give each other space to say it. It doesn't mean everybody gets their own way, but it does mean everybody gets heard. One of the last things that we do train on are different types of circles. Circles most school districts, most schools use. We talk about different types of circles that you can do that will help you either with curriculum or addressing issues of building community. We have conferences, which is a scripted response, similar to a circle, except we are very, very specific about who gets invited to those things. The conference is probably the most structured thing that we offer, and that's definitely for situations that are very elevated. They are not for everyday occurrences. And I pretty much believe that's all that we shared, although it seems like a lot. And the last piece that I just want to say is that I do believe that your district is prime and ready for this, but I also recognize that when you're shifting lenses, and you're shifting a paradigm, and you're shifting a culture, even if it's the slightest shift, you have to be patient, because not everybody goes at the same speed. And that's the other piece about this that we spent a lot of time talking about, is you have to take people where they are and help them to be reflective on how this can personally impact me, before you can expect them to professionally use it effectively. It has to come from within, because it really is about, how do I communicate with people in a sincere, authentic way? And you have to be actually sincere and authentic to communicate in a sincere and authentic way. So that means you do have to sort of internalize it. So the first year might feel a little rocky and different, because it's changed, but I trust you, the minute people start to feel their own personal responses to either how they've used it at home with their own kid, and they come into school, is when you'll start to see even more and more in quick buy-in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Any questions?
For the board to ask questions. I do want to point out that IIRP is going to hold our hand a bit next year. We do have them coming once a month, at least. Right now, we've set them up for once a month, spend a day with us, do some clinical work, and/or pull out workshops if we feel like we need to bring up, bring groups of teachers together. Now, the model that I've talked to Corey Cook about at IIRP would have them actually spending up to three years with us. Maybe not as frequently as they would come the first year, but definitely there for us, so that when we move the culture over the next couple of years, we got their, they had our back. So I'll leave that to the board to ask questions.
Two questions. Do you provide marriage counseling? Number one. Number two, do you have a component for early childhood? And if it's not part of, you know, this, do you know of other places that have something similar?
Okay, so part one, no, I do not provide marriage counseling, but I will say that this was amazing for me raising a teenage daughter, if anybody's ever had that experience. Okay? However, and I'm divorced, so I... In terms of early childhood, what IIRP is doing now is they're starting to gather more and more resources for educators who are working with very, very young children, as well as children who are not as verbal and older. There are, for example, the cards that we talk about with those questions, they have versions where people use pictures and feeling cards and all of those things. So IIRP is gathering that kind of information, and Corey probably would be your best connection to get as much of those resources that are available. Thank you.
Sure. Nope? I'm really impressed and happy and excited. I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I wanted to add that, too.
Absolutely. Can I, something that we, this is sort of not the main point of your talk, but something that we talk about a lot is the idea of these, I forgot what you call them, conferences, sort of in reaction to something that's happened. Does the training to teachers and administrators include issues of like, when it would not be wise to have the supposed offender? When it would not be wise to have the two people that were in conflict speaking with each other? We don't want a situation where, you know, someone who's sort of a victim, if you will, feels pressured to appear in front of somebody who is...
Yeah, we do talk about that, and particularly, if we're going to have the two together, the person who was affected has to agree.
Okay.
So we don't mandate that at all.
Okay.
That's baseline, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Nobody else had any questions? No?
All right, okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
I can't tell you how excited we are that we're at this point, because this has been a conversation that's been brewing for quite some time, so that we're at the point where this is actually going to be implemented next year is just, we're excited.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The teachers who Tanya trained will be trained again this summer on how to turnkey the training to everybody else. That's a three-day session. They spent four days with Tanya a couple of weeks ago. I'm waiting for the projector to boot up. The next part of my presentation has me following up the state of the district report I gave on June 12th. At that time, I talked about recognitions, accolades the district received. I gave a brief update about the strategic plan, but tonight, I just want to touch on the things that I took away from the New Jersey Department of Ed Performance Report data from 2015-2016. So every year, the DOE reflects on the prior year. By prior year, I'm talking actually about two years back. The data I'm talking about is 2015-16 data, not 16-17 data. Looks a lot at standardized assessment results, PARC, also looks at chronic absenteeism, believe it or not, the number of visual performing arts classes our kids are taking. And then make public these reports. I have placed all of the information on the district website. If you go to the main site, hpschools.net, click District, there'll be a drop-down option to go back as far as 2011 and pull down all the reports. Just keep in mind that the data is not the same as it was even two years ago. So, starting in 2013-2014, the DOE revamped a lot of its reporting. So prior to that, you're really comparing apples and oranges. I like to compare apples to apples. So when I went into the DOE report for 2015-16, shared it with the principals, I honed in on the results of our subgroups, the small groups of students who we look at closely, like our African-American population, our special ed population, economically disadvantaged population, the LL, white, Asian, and I looked for trends. I questioned the validity and reliability of the standardized assessment data, but if I see some trends that I also see on other reports, I get concerned. Besides looking at the PARC data from the DOE report, I also looked at MAP data, measurements of academic progress. That's a new assessment tool. We just started using this past year at the middle school, grade six to eight. We administer it three times, once in the fall, once in the winter, once in the spring. It's an adaptive assessment. It actually adjusts the complexity of the questions according to the kids' responses. So it's a bit, I think, more authentic information than PARC. And I also looked, I looked at this past year at class grades to see if there were any trends. I actually broke out the average grades in English Language Arts and Math for our subgroups, grade six, seven, and eight. So I looked at the special ed class grades on average in each content area, and I compared it to the whole school class grades average, just to see if I found some similar trends. And I did, I did. If anything, I find similar trends in both the performance report information I'm getting and also the internal assessment information I'm getting. And I thought it would be a good time for me to briefly overview all the things that we have built into our strategic plan. These aren't just things we're coming up with out of our habitat, to help all of our students grow, regardless of their subgroup, economically disadvantaged, African-American, special ed. And these are the things I want to hone in on right now. First, I want to talk about how we are working to expose all of our kids to the same rigorous curriculum of their peers. Those school districts that have an enormous difference in achievement between their subgroups and, among their subgroups, so let's say the Asian and white subgroup is outperforming the economically disadvantaged and the special education subgroups in a school, are often those districts that have separate curriculum for their special needs students and their, in the case of my example, their Asian students, or their white students, or everybody else, for that matter. Special resource route classes, pull-out programs may have slimmed-down content, content that's supposedly modified to meet the needs of the learners, but in reality, is different and not as rigorous in many cases as their peers' curriculum. We are working in a couple of ways to resolve this issue that was existing in this district for quite a while. First of all, we're going to see how we can more effectively integrate kids of different abilities into similar classes, like we're doing with U.S. History II with honors option next year. We're going to look closely at how having the students who were in the college prep program work with their peers and exposed to the same curriculum as their peers fare. And as I promised the board when we proposed this idea of introducing a U.S. History II with honors option course, I will be conducting a fall, winter, and a spring assessment of our progress. We're going to do it in a number of ways. I'll report back to the board as soon as I get the first set of data. And the other thing we're doing in that area is going to be engaging in book studies, and Darcy's going to be talking to the board soon about revisiting the idea of a book study for all teachers, leadership team, and board on ways we could take what we did with the... with the U.S. History II class and expand it successfully. And finally, if we're going to expose all kids to the same rigorous curriculum, we need to be sure it's codified in our curriculum guides effectively, and we're doing this right now, specifically by making, going back to my example from a couple of minutes ago, our pull-out program, resource room class curriculum for special needs students, very close, if not uniform completely, to their peers. But that will also include additional modifications that we have to make to give the support those kids need to make up for any academic deficiencies they might have that their peers don't have. The other area in which we're going to be focusing on helping all of our kids achieve is to be sure we do a better job differentiating instruction. And I know the board, the community hears about differentiated instruction ad nauseam, but I'm going to keep plugging, and our supervisors of curriculum instruction are going to keep introducing new strategies that I'll talk about in a second, like potentially incorporating something called Math Workshop at Bartle School and, and the Reader's Workshop and Writer's Workshop model to build in the differentiated strategies in a lockstep program as opposed to just trying to come up with these pop-up strategies that we give teachers to put in their lessons. I also want to let the board, the community know that I've tasked Jennifer Knapp, our supervisor for special projects, to take more responsibility to spearhead an effort I just didn't get to, but I wanted to, and that is to look at our entire assessment approach, K-12, to make sure that we are, we're widening the scope of assessments so that we meet all of our kids' needs, not just providing certain types of assessments, traditional multiple-choice tests, projects, but an array of assessments. And so Ms. Knapp and I had a conversation two weeks ago about her now taking that initiative, so I'm going to, I'm going to delegate that task. It is actually in our strategic plan to have us look closely at how we assess our kids, so she'll be responsible for implementing those action steps. The other thing I wanted to mention with the, with the, the built-in programs that frame for teachers how to differentiate instruction, and one of the things we're examining right now is something called Math Workshop. I'll have Dr. Nikosia talk to the board about that in September. Something that we have learned about through some of our partner districts like West Windsor Plainsboro, we actually sent a team of teachers and Dr. Nikosia to see Math Workshop in action. It follows these guidelines. Bottom line, it has a lot to do with putting more of the onus on building knowledge on the kids' shoulders instead of just focusing on direct instruction, a more traditional model of math instruction. The teacher gets up, prevents, presents a concept, models the concept, and then gives it up to the kids. It's the I-do, we-do, you-do mantra. The idea of Math Workshop is actually to do a whole lot of more you-do, we-do, and you-do than it is, than it does I-do. We're just looking at it, we're not considering it for adoption, and I'll talk to the curriculum committee and the full board if, if we even decide to go forward on something like this. But for now, we're just exploring it. We're also expanding the intervention services we are providing. I thank the board for its support on allowing the district to reach out and look for a part-time teacher who is actually certified in a decoding strategy called the Wilson Method. It's very similar to the Orton-Gillingham approach, and we actually have a candidate who we're looking at closely and may, I may come to the board in August to, to recommend that person. This individual would not only provide additional services to help students who identify with dyslexia and, and other reading deficiencies, but potentially work to train our teachers to more effectively use some of these decoding strategies in their classes. And finally, I'm also having Jennifer Knapp take a better look at the pre-K kindergarten years and how we're identifying their needs. I spoke to a colleague of mine, Tom Trammellini, last year, who had some success in Keansburg, where he was director of curriculum, on the work that he did in early childhood, assessing students and then effectively providing them remediation. And so I'm going to be looking closely at some of the models that they use, seeing how we might be able to adopt it here in Harlem Park. As Tanya just pointed out, a big part of helping kids function effectively in school, regardless of their subgroup, is to make sure that they have strong self-esteem and confidence. And I'm not going to go into restorative practices in depth, but that's obviously another look at how we are going to help our, help all of our kids achieve along with their peers in an equitable fashion. We're actually, we're also going to be modifying our discipline practices, and I'll talk more to the board and the community in public session about that. We are going to be meeting with Dr. Ann Gregory August 1st, we being the leadership team, myself included, to take another look at how we are putatively disciplining students who misbehave and see how we can more constructively help them redirect their misbehaviors. And finally, I'm going to be working with Rutgers, particularly Vicki Potapicki, who was a guidance counselor at Bartle, on staffing the Bartle Social Decision Making Lab, which was staffed by a post-doc student at Rutgers through the Psychology Department years ago. But with Vicki's retirement, I think we also lost that relationship with the Psychology Department, so we're going to try to restore that in time for September. I've mentioned to the board and the community the need for us to help our kids, or help our teachers and administrators be more culturally responsive, and in this way, I do believe we're going to be able to help our subgroups, particularly those who we have not been responsive to in the past. First thing we're going to be doing is examining our hidden biases. Everybody's going to be taking the Harvard University Project Implicit Assessment in September, which I think will be a good start for our conversations that we're going to continue in our professional learning communities. We've got 13 meetings set aside for PLCs, so I'll report back to the board at the end of the year on our progress. But I do strongly believe that by being more sensitive to our subgroup kids' needs, whether they be of a, of a different religious affiliation than the majority of their peers or where they bring different learning needs to, to the, to the classroom, we do need to be more sensitive to what they bring to us. And that's it for now. Obviously, I have to report back to the board on the progress we're making in all these areas, but I just wanted to give you at least a cursory review of, of our progress so far. Any questions?
I have two.
Yes.
The last slide, the assessment that you're talking about, the implicit bias assessment, when is that going to be done and how is, how is that, how is that administered as an assessment?
I'll pull it back up. The implicit bias assessment. So Teaching Tolerance and Harvard teamed up to implement, to put together an assessment that identifies 13 potential biases that people may have, but that they don't even realize they have consciously about other people or their kids. So for instance, the leadership team actually took this assessment, and one of the 13 types of biases you may have has to do with body composition, people who are overweight, people who are underweight, and how we might subconsciously react to their appearance when we relate to them. Now, for us, it's important for teachers to at least recognize that they may have hidden biases. Let's start there, that the fact that they might actually be interacting with their kids in a different way according to some subconscious way, they're sizing up the student, whether it be the student's skin color, size, gender. So once we uncover those biases and start getting our teachers and our paraprofessionals to think outside of their conscience, we are going to have them engage in either an action research project, a book study, it could be a professional study based on periodicals they can bring in, people from outside, with the principal's guidance to start to try to redirect their behaviors once they identify what they are. So if somebody is, uncovers a potential bias towards students who have special needs, the teacher thinks that the child just can't work to the ability of a typical peer, somebody who's not special needs, will expect that over the next 13 professional learning community sessions, the teacher's focusing on how to remediate that problem. So we actually are going to fine-tune the professional learning community activities to the results of the assessment, so we're not just going to have them fly by the seat of their pants. Does that make sense?
Yes, I think part of my question was more concrete, just how is that administered? Is that a computer thing? Is it, oh, everybody gets it together?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's web-based.
That's okay, I love more information.
Yeah, it's web-based, it's web-based. And I'll send a link to the board if you want to give it a go on your own.
Because I'm actually thinking it would be really something interesting for the board to participate in as well, whether we participate in it at the same time or whether we all, you know, if it's just some website we go to and take something and then we all look at our stuff, I mean, it would just, it would be an interesting, and maybe, maybe we need to talk about kind of doing that as like, you know, we've kind of always toyed with the idea of like a board retreat or something, or maybe that could be the start of our book study or something. I'm just thinking it would be an interesting process for us to go through too. I'd hate to have the teachers do something that we're not, we're not willing to do to ourselves, you know?
Okay. I've taken it online, it's kind of humbling, or it was for me.
Yeah, I would think it would be really interesting.
I'll make sure to, to get, I'll send a lot of information to the board about it, including the links to the site. Takes about 15 or 20 minutes to complete the assessment, then you get a whole printout of results.
And then the other thing I just wanted to bring up is something that you and I also discussed. We have this interesting dynamic on the board where we have one, two, one who's absent, or board members who have not just one student moving from Bartle to the middle school, but two students moving from Bartle to the middle school. So we have, between three board members, we have six students making that transition from one school to another. And you and I talked about the math and how that's being tracked and the idea of really looking at the impact of that in a very concrete way, because just based on my experience of it, talking to Ruth a little bit, actually, I haven't had a chance to talk to Sharice about it, I can see a specific pattern in talking to other parents in our, you know, in our circles, you can kind of see a trend. And I think it would be very interesting to take a really hard look at what kids have been grouped into the highest level, the mid-level, the lower level, and then that this waiver has been offered, what parents in those same groups then choose to wave their students up into a higher level and which parents don't. And I think we have to take a really, we have to really look at that and think about that and what does that mean in terms of how we're setting off our students, you know, post elementary education, what kind of foot are we getting that off on? From my understanding, last year, there was some effort to maybe look at detracking, and then there was a panic among the parents last year and petitions and, you know, and then maybe this was a pushback to that, but I think perhaps we pushed, we went too far in the other direction because I'm seeing this very clear stratification starting off in middle school, and that's, that's a really kind of crummy way to start off middle school.
I noticed that as well last year with my kids, the math stuff, you know? And it's awful to think that we might be unintentionally tracking kids studying in sixth grade.
After doing such a good job in Bartle of not tracking them, you know? Like, and in, in the past, they have been tracked in Bartle, you know, that, that tracking used to start much earlier.
Sure, right now.
Specifically with math. We've done away with that, but now we're like, we're hitting it hard as soon as they make that transition to middle school.
Yeah, I agree. So the, so the leadership team is, the leadership team's book study is going to focus on ability grouping, tracking, detracking, best practices. We're looking at one of three books, two of which are written by Carol Burris, who Darcy introduced me to, and is somebody that I think we've talked about, helped give us some consult about the U.S. History II with Options. So we're, I'm, we are admittedly, I am admittedly a year behind our strategic plan, which had us researching the math tracks this past year. We'll do that research next year, and potentially there'll be some change in 2018, 19. I had to add though, just as a positive about some small impact we are having on the problem, by offering the free booster classes this summer, we have, and I tell you what, I'll report back to the board by email the exact numbers of students who we receive, who've got into that program. I'll do that in an email tomorrow. I do know for a fact that two students happen to be, have special needs, took the program, and it, I had a conversation with Jen Knapp about this because she's helping operate the program. It's being funded by Title I funds. These are kids who we believe would not have taken that booster class in, on their own, outside of the school's support, and I don't know what they would have done once they enrolled at the middle school, but, but they did successfully complete Algebra I. And we actually, I'm going to be recommending to the board in August that we hire a teacher to help them take the Algebra I end-of-year assessment that they have to take by law because they did complete those, those classes. So that's at least two students I know who I think we may have positively impacted to get ahead of the track. But I will report back to the board by email between now and the next meeting about those numbers.
Yeah, I mean, because if we could just not have the tracks to begin with, it would certainly help more kids, you know, instead of the goal being to jump tracks, you know, the goal be to not have the tracks.
Particularly that early. I mean, I understand, you know, we're talking about BC calculus or whatever it's called these days, you know, people have very strong opinions about who can take that and who can't, and maybe students themselves have those very strong opinions, but when it comes to sixth-grade math, that's, I firmly believe, based on the curriculum I saw last year, that we can get our students up to that level.
Well, and it just became, I mean, from what I was hearing from sources, it just became this very competitive, like, did you get in? Are you going to get in? Like, what do you have to get on this?
And do we see a racial pattern or an ethic?
And that's what I'm, that's what I'd like to say.
Yeah, that'd be great to know.
It's hard to imagine that there wouldn't be one.
Right.
And I'll, I'll be sure to break down the data, the enrollment data by subgroup.
Great.
That'd be great. It's hard, it's awful to see these performance reports with the subgroup issues and then just think, well, we're just perpetuating that by, you know, thrusting everybody into the lower class.
Right.
Thank you. And Ms. Ackley couldn't make it tonight because she had a, has a stomach bug, so I'm going to have her come to the September, the August board meeting.
Great. I had a question.
Yeah.
The last slide again, if we were talking about the PLCs, have those already been planned or those are still open?
No, we're still in the planning phase.
Okay, so as far as the racial bias goes, I had seen, I mean, years, like maybe decades ago, someone on television named Jane Elliott, I don't know if you've ever heard of her.
Name sounds familiar.
Yeah, so she's been, she's 84 years old, she's a schoolteacher, and she is an activist of many kinds. She's a feminist and LGBT activist, but her main work is around racial bias. And she did a very famous study called the Blue Eyes Brown Eyes Project.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to suggest that we, you know, put that on a little maybe sidebar for a racial component, because I know that that had been tremendously effective for a lot of different people that have encountered her program, and it's been around for a while. Yeah.
No, thanks.
Thanks.
Cool. All right, if no one else has any other questions for Scott, we will move on to our committee reports. Let's start with Michelle for Curriculum and Instruction.
Okay, so of course, since this is a voting meeting, this is the meeting that I did not have time in my schedule to put together a report. It's usually such a detailed report. So you're welcome. But I do have the Curriculum Committee, Committee Agenda in front of me, so I can run through that and, you know, please, Rob and Ruth, if you have anything to add, jump on in.
I'll do.
Okay, so the first item was the agenda review, and we went through the agenda, but it has since changed, so we will be tabling number two, I believe, yes? So that we won't go through.
Yes.
Okay. And so the other things that we spoke about were the new courses. We wanted some more information on the new courses, and those were now added to the agenda as of tonight, but we didn't have additional information during our committee meeting. So I'll leave that to Dr. Taylor to fill in the blanks with items six through nine. Our second item during our committee meeting was the NJ DOE Performance Report Analysis, which she just presented. Number three was Restorative Practices, which Ms. Lewis just presented. Number four was a Program Spotlight on ELA Programs and Intervention Services. And I don't really have a whole lot to, that, in my brain, I guess, that is like, you know, firing off right now. I don't remember going into much detail on the ELA programs. The middle school French program and the word language survey was the next item in our committee meeting, and we spoke about the issues of, or the lack of, the, the French program at the middle school. This past year, you know, those of us that had students at the middle school who were taking French didn't really take French. We had a substitute for most of the year, and the substitute was for the new hire after our longtime French teacher, Mr. Patterson, left. So there were a lot of different, you know, movies shown and other things, I mean, there was really no word language for those kids. So I believe the story that we had heard during our committee meeting was that there was no luck finding a new French teacher, and that we were going to do a survey of the faculty to figure out if there was another language that we could provide the students, and if we were to go down that route, what language would they... down that route, what language would they suggest we go towards? And I believe we had spoke about Russian, Chinese.
I have it here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have.
American Sign Language, Latin.
American Sign Language and Latin.
Yeah, Hindi.
Mandarin.
Hindi and Mandarin.
The deadline to complete the surveys is Friday.
Yes. Arabic was also on the list. So it was Mandarin, Hindi, Arabic, Latin, and ASL, which is American Sign Language. So the Russian came from me. I thought that was important since there was such a tremendous Russian-speaking population in our town. And Dr. Taylor says that that survey will finish up this Friday.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'll email the committee once I have the results. And we have about forty-seven responses as of this afternoon.
And where can people find it?
It was mailed home to all the middle school parents, the regular mail.
Right.
So it's not online, but the link to the site is on the letter.
Could it maybe be emailed out to parents again, just to remind, as a reminder, deadline this Friday?
Not a bad idea.
I, I understood that it was the faculty that was being surveyed first. Is that right?
It's out, it's out for parents.
It's out for parents now.
Yeah.
But I, I thought that the faculty had some, that's what I understood. So that the faculty was responsible for the list that was the survey, the list that comprised the survey. Mandarin, Hindi, Arabic, Latin, and ASL. So the survey that went home, I believe it did include Russian?
No.
Didn't?
I think it was an other, right? A write-in. You could write in another language if you so thought that was important.
Okay. So that's still in the works. So our committee obviously asked, you know, what would possibly happen if we don't find a French teacher? If, if this survey is a bust, what do we do? And I think that the answer was, as far as I understood, that we would expand the Spanish program, and we would offer more courses, more Spanish courses to the students that had formerly been French students.
And we'll be sure to send a letter home to the parents' guardians as soon as we know the direction at which we're going. Well, regular mail, that.
Yeah. So there was an extensive search, from my understanding, for a new French teacher.
Yeah. Well, as Personnel Committee Chair, I can attest that we've been looking for a very long time, and we have had absolutely no luck. So it's not for lack of trying.
Yeah.
Very disappointed, but this is what we were left with. So, yeah, the question is where do we go from here?
Right. So the next step is the survey and deciding where to go in, in the interim, I guess, because the, it looks like the Spanish expansion would be the next obvious step.
Yeah. I mean, and I think we maybe discussed this before, but you, we are seeing this in other districts as well, just like a
We are.
... of French instructors.
And one theory is that school districts are scaling out back their French offerings. And so when there's less demand, there are less teachers in the pipeline for preparation. We're seeing, I think I sent something to the committee about statistics regarding the precipitous drop in French teaching candidates in, in the college, so.
Rutgers? I mean, have you reached out to Rutgers and Montclair and like those, like, do they have, do they not even have students coming out with that?
If they do, they haven't, we haven't seen them, but we have. In fact, we even reached out to the French Society. There's a French Society at Rutgers that Mary Curran connected us to.
French?
And trying to reach out to folks who would be willing to potentially alternately, alternate certify if the committee, if the Personnel Committee was supportive of that, but we haven't gotten any bites.
So I have a question. So, so if, you know, it's looking like we were not going to find a French teacher, is our priority to try to find, to have a second language?
Absolutely.
And maybe only for a year, do Spanish?
It would be to go with the language based on the feedback we get from the survey. And the timing is such that we could recruit, interview, and potentially select somebody by the August 21st board meeting.
The languages that were chosen, is there any evidence that we're going to be more successful with actually finding?
There is, because I'd rather not share the language that I'm seeing
Okay.
Come up as the most
But, but at least
Wanted.
One of them?
But it is one that I have been told I can likely find a good candidate for more readily. I don't want to influence anybody.
This is sort of an aside, but is there, and obviously we want to maintain the language in the middle school, but is it a state requirement to have three years of?
Not at the middle school level.
Not at the middle school.
No.
So it's not like we're by, whatever happened last year, we're not out of compliance?
Correct.
Or something like that. Okay. I mean, we want to provide it. I'm not saying we don't.
We did talk about that in our meeting. And, you know, it seems like common knowledge. Everyone seems to agree that it's the best time for learning language at the early grades. So, you know, me working in a childcare center, I, I know that there are one-year-olds that are speaking, you know, three languages effortlessly. So we did talk about that. You know, could we possibly expand the Spanish program in the middle school, but then also provide for another language earlier? Or could we, you know, in some way focus on the early grades for a world language rather than, you know, more the loss of a language at the high school level, for example? Could we provide a, a language program in Irving, in Bartle, that doesn't currently exist? So we did discuss that. It did come up. We didn't come up with any specifics, but it's on the radar.
For all of these, also, we're looking at how this would impact at the high school also with the transition towards either more students in Spanish or picking up another, like whether or not we would have a continuation of, if we picked up another language at the middle school, whether or not we would continue to offer that language in the high school.
So I should clarify for the community. I appreciate you bringing that up. Whatever language we introduce, if it's a new language in the middle school, we'd have to continue through the high school. Now, if we phase French out, it, regardless of what we put in its place, the current eighth graders will be assured they can go through the next four years of high school taking French, because I feel like we owe it to them since they've committed at the middle school level and start this language to finish it out.
And wasn't one of the bits of information you're going to come back to us with was how many kids are doing that currently? How many kids we have in the different levels?
We have that, Darcy, yeah.
Okay.
How many people are taking the language now? We have, in the middle school, eighty-nine French students and one hundred and forty-five Spanish for the 2016-17 year.
Is that in all three grades or?
Middle school.
That's for middle school.
No, I know, but if there's three grades.
All three, yeah.
And then in high school, ninety-two French, two hundred and forty-four Spanish, which was actually a little bit of an increase. For middle school, it was a drop from the previous year.
Is that nine, nine?
Nine, no.
Nine children taking in the middle school? Is that what you said?
No, 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 no.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine. Thank you.
Of French.
Sorry.
And one forty-five Spanish. That was for the 2016-17 year. That was a slight drop in the middle school from, it was ninety-five students the previous year. So ninety-five to eighty-nine, Spanish went from one sixty-one to one forty-five. French went up in the high school from seventy-seven to ninety-two, and Spanish dropped from two seventy-six to two forty-four.
But so you just have year to year there. I, I think part of what, you know, as we get further down this road, what would be interesting is looking at cohorts, you know? So of a grade that starts in sixth grade, as they move forward, instead of just year to year, because you can have vacillation in years and number of total students, so it's hard to tell what you're looking at. But if you're looking at, okay, in sixth grade, this many started in French and this many started in Spanish, and then you follow those kids along, how many of those stay with Spanish and how many of those stay with French? Like, if we're seeing this, like, serious drop-off in French, then, you know, we know kids aren't necessarily sticking with it, you know, or they are, or, you know, whatever.
And I just want to confirm, American Sign Language now is a foreign language in New Jersey for high school students, correct?
Yeah. And some districts provide it to the students who don't want to take a world language, me to meet the one-year requirement at the high school level.
Oh, okay.
But colleges always want to see three. So for high school, you know.
And that's a remarkably helpful one to have. I mean, you can go out, like, immediately and get a real job.
That would be really exciting, yes.
Like, I mean, that's like a, that's like a job guarantee right there.
Right.
Is one option, I'm not sure if I heard you say this, but one option for the coming year with French to, again, hire a long-term sub for the year? Or is that something we don't, don't want to go there?
Well, I doubt we would find somebody qualified. We're having a hard enough time finding a permanent, a, to pick up a permanent position. Finding a long-term sub is probably going to be more precarious. But I, you know, we're not, we're, we're still holding out to see if we can find somebody, and if not, we'll go to Plan B.
Anyone out there who's a certified French teacher?
Is it posted?
Come on, get those resumes in there. We're waiting, are you?
Not right now.
It's posted in the
We've gone so far as to Skype.
It is posted. The job is posted.
But not on our site, though.
Not on our site. Not on Apple. It's not on HP schools. Is the French position still posted in Apple track?
Yes, it is. It's still open. The only thing we have not done is advertise it in the Star Ledger again.
We need to make sure it comes up on the website, though, when people search. Are you saying that when you go to
If they go to employment opportunities.
I didn't remember seeing it. I just, every once in a while, I'll look through there, and I did not remember seeing it, but I certainly could be wrong.
That's all checked.
It takes like six years.
No, it's not there.
Yeah, it's not.
Michelle, you're still
If you go, anybody out in the community who might be interested, if you go to the district website, click District, there's a, a link to the Employment Opportunities section. Click it, and then you'll be taken to the Apple Track interface, and that shows you all the vacant positions we have.
I'm, I'm hearing that it's actually not showing up if you access it through HP Schools.
It's not.
Right.
So there needs to be just somebody, like, keeping that up to date. I mean, it may be that it's on Apple Track somewhere, but it's not being pushed, it's not being pushed through to our website.
If you go to here.
Yeah, I see. Okay, I'm looking at it now. I'll, I'll update that tomorrow morning.
Thank you. So the next
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. The next item on our committee meeting list was the substitute coverage at the high school. And we had spoken about this last meeting. So rather than employ the number of substitutes at the high school that are required on any given day, the proposal is to hire two dedicated substitutes for all of the classes that would be affected on any given day, and to station them in the high school cafeteria where all of the students in each class would be, you know, coming together to sit in their classes and to do whatever assignments were left for them. So it would cut down on the personnel that we would require for absentee teachers in the high school, which is an issue, apparently, that there are so many substitutes in and out of the building. And, you know, I have never thought about it as a tremendously big issue, because that's how it was done in my high school. Then again, my high school was doing all of the stuff that everyone talks about, the charter schools doing, and all of these other schools do, that is terrible practice. It's not best practice. So I have no two cents to add on this at all in my own personal experience, but I do know that in our conversation, Ruth brought up, you know, some students that might require additional quiet rather than a cafeteria full of students. It could potentially be, you know, dozens of students in the classroom, in the cafeteria at once. And so Dr. Taylor told us that there are two private rooms off of the cafeteria. One of them we use for our, our dinners when we have board event meetings and our uh
At the high school?
Right. So, so there are two private rooms where one of the substitutes could be. But, you know, there's lots of conversations to have about that. I just, for my own experience, you know, it was a very small high school, of course, but like, that's how things were done. We didn't have the personnel to, to do it that way. And Dr. Taylor did share that many different districts do employ this strategy.
But I will be sure to come back to the committee in October, late October, after we had a full, good full month of school, to see how this, this thing played out.
And an interesting thing, just maybe to kind of take a little bit of the question mark out of this, might be to look at, say, pick us some random week from last year, look at the high school, look at how many subs were required, and kind of like, give us a look at what a week would look like. Like, in, you know, just a random week last year, this is how many classes you would have had in the cafeteria at any one time, you know? So if you could look at it and say, ah, you know, at no point did we ever have more than sixty kids, or, you know, like, just kind of put a number on it, so we're not just like, potentially there's going to be ten classrooms of kids in there, you know? Like, so we just, we have a sense of what, what does a typical week at the high school look like, and how many subs are we looking at? And then we can quantify that.
Great.
If I, if I could also jump in, the, the, this is designed primarily for short absences, right, for up to
Correct.
Two or three maybe days. So I would be interested in, you know, when I, no, I think, I think when it's, when we are expecting a teacher to be out for a longer period of time, we would bring in a sub for, yeah. So, but I would be interested in knowing, you know, what has been the practice of our teachers, you know, how, how many days when they are out? Are they out for a day typically? Are they out for two days? Or how often is it that we do? And I, you know, that, that I think would be something to explore as well.
So those two numbers, right? How many people are absent on a given day, and how often, how long is your typical teacher?
How long the absence is.
Right, right. So the kids in that room going to be, you know, it'll be their third day in the room typically?
We'll get back to the board on some of that data.
Cool. Yeah. And I think the Finance Committee felt like, you know, we, you know, we needed to take a bit of a hit on this one, because this did come up in the budget stuff, but then didn't make it into the final budget presentation as one of the, you know, items that was discussed. But it was discussed in Finance, and it was, it was brought up in Finance, and I wish Mark was here, because he'd probably remember the number that was attached to it. And I don't remember the number that was attached to it off the top of my head.
I don't remember the number, but it was a, a big number.
You know, it was tens of thousands of dollars. And when we're having those conversations and you're looking at these, you know, do we take from this pot, or do we take from this pot, or do we take? And we're constantly, you know, like, scraping off the bone and trying not to come at instruction. This, this was one of those last things that ended up there to save us tens of thousands of dollars that wasn't going to take away a program or a teacher or, you know, where, you know, you knew, or you didn't know, but you know, the sense, the, the sense behind it was, you're going to have potentially four subs in four different classrooms who are just giving the kids busy work to begin with. They're not, you know, delivering content. They're not, you know, there's not instruction going on in those rooms. Is it ideal to then put them all in one room? No. But if that saves you over the course of the year thirty, forty thousand dollars, hmm, you know, maybe we need to look at that for a while, you know, hoping maybe someday our, our budget magically expands, but, you know.
Right. And Scott, you did do a significant amount of research outreach into what practices other school districts are doing, and so this, this fit in nicely with that. So we were comfortable when we, you know, moved forward.
Right. But I think, you know, on behalf of Finance and, you know, the, the folks who sat around the budget table, you know, we apologize to everyone else that this didn't come out for a more, a more full-fledged conversation.
Thank you. Yeah. Well, I, I appreciate all the effort in trying to avoid cutting out program or, you know, other things. And like I said, as far as my personal experience, living through this and my own high school experience, it was just the way things were done, and it was fine. So unless we can, you know, somehow prove that it's going to be a hundred wild students in the cafeteria, I don't know that we would have a serious problem with it.
And we did talk about, you know, if there are more than X number, you would get additional subs, you know? You wouldn't like, no matter how many kids there are, you only have two subs, you know? If there, if you know on any given day you're going to have more students in there, then you get more, you get more hands on that.
Yeah, it's certainly not ideal, but if it's flexible.
Right.
But I did appreciate also, I think you said, Scott, that the two substitutes, that you were looking at two specific people that you had in mind that were familiar with the students already. So it would be a consistent two substitutes. That made a big difference in my mind.
Right.
I, I think I'll take the, what I would consider one of the worst weeks.
[laughing]
Like the week leading up to Christmas break, or something along those lines. Yeah, just get a worst-case scenario.
Or even when some of the big trips were going, like, there are some clubs that there's a lot of teachers that
Right.
Are the
Advisors, yeah.
Advisors, you know.
Right, right.
All right. So there were two other items. District Mentorship Plan, that is for the August
21st Board Meeting Review, and also the District Professional Development Plan for seventeen, eighteen. That's also for August 21st. So we did talk about those two things. I don't know that we really went in depth on those, but I don't have a whole lot to add, again. And that is the end of my committee report.
Okay. And so, Michelle, you said you were kind of asking Scott to give us a little bit more background on the, the new courses
Yes.
That are on the agenda?
So those did not occur on our original Agenda Review, and we did ask him to provide that background for us. So that's all new to me. Items number
Six, seven, eight.
Six through nine.
Nine.
Yeah.
Can you flesh those out a little bit for us?
Sure. Well, first of all, so there are four courses, three of which are being recommended as electives. All but one would be, so all but one, which is the, what we're referring to as Makerspace Program, would be a required Program, would be a required cycle course. That would take the place of the Pull-Out Technology Program that we've offered in the past. Do you want me to elaborate on any particular of the four courses?
So the Makerspace, you're saying, is mandatory?
Okay, so the Makerspace Program would be a class that the kids cycle through once every third of the year. The program would be almost entirely project-based, so that students would come to the lab, which we're going to be using, we're going to be gutting the computer lab that Ms. Dovatov currently uses upstairs in the middle school, and creating spaces that they, the kids could actually sit down and, with some prompts, create a website based on whatever interest they have. They could create an animated clip. They'll also be instantly working to build these projects into their regular classes, their janitors' classes, so there'll be some interdisciplinary work going on between Ms. Dovatov, who will propose to teach the class, and the other teachers. And so basically, the students are going to be satisfying standards, 8.1 and 8.2 for technology, but all through project-based learning.
I mean, I know when the Makerspace stuff came up at Bartle last year, like, the kids were gaga, just like, beyond excited to be doing more hands-on, I'm not just sitting on a computer and typing.
Right. Yeah, I can imagine.
The traditional Makerspace, if you go online and Google, focused a lot on engineering, so the kids could create models and prototypes. We're not there yet. We're going to be focusing more on digital content creation.
And then the others, Spanish for native speakers, and service-based learning, and writing techniques. I mean, I'm assuming a lot by the titles, but maybe you could just give us, you know, a synopsis of what they are? I know those are electives.
Right, and so the service-based learning class would be taught by Ms. Ferringo. It's been an extension of her Be the Change Project, so she'd basically be expanding that to kids who really embrace that project. All of our sixth graders go through that process. The native speakers class, I think it's self-explanatory in the description, as for our native Spanish speakers. And the other class is the writing techniques class, and that would be focusing on helping, really what that is, is for us to allow kids who love to write, to write continually for a third of the class, a third of the year, instead of taking a different visual performing arts elective. And again, all the description of the course is actually in the document. I mean, I could go into more detail if you have questions.
This year, there's a creative writing elective. Is this taking the place of that, or is this separate?
For the technical writing course?
Creative.
Yeah, the creative writing course is sort of what you described, which already exists as an elective. I think this writing techniques is different.
Yeah, Jennifer kind of explained it to us when she was here. She explained this to us as more of like, the technical writing that they were finding in kids.
Correct, like, research papers, and, you know, we have some kids who, at the high school level, intern off-site at Rutgers or labs, and this would help teach them how to write science papers.
I thought this was the one that, like, focused on sort of textual interpretation à la Park, that all students would be, this is the middle school one, right? I'm sorry, I was having trouble finding my policies, so I got a little distracted. So this is, I thought it was, it's not like about writing scientific papers, right? It's about doing the sort of types of textual analysis that the Park exam demands, and which we presumably independently believe is important.
Correct, but again, solely elective, not, it's not a cycle class.
It is elective.
It's not requiring kids to take this class.
I see, I thought it was, got it, thank you.
So only Makerspace is required?
Correct, and it takes the place of the Pull-Out Technology Class that we were running.
Do you think people are going to enjoy that technical writing class? Do you think people are going to enjoy that technical writing class? I mean, I would enjoy it if it was, you know, a scientific paper-writing class, or a research paper-writing class, but it sounded more like it was going to be, you know, how to analyze a text and answer interesting --
Well, obviously, if there's no interest, we're going to have to shut the elective down at some point. But what's the board?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
After the board votes on the electives, we're going to be going back out to the middle school kids and announcing these options that they can select, go from there.
Not for nothing, I like to, you know, map out a sentence.
I don't think it's that, though. I think it's like, you know, read this text, which, it's like, I mean, it was explained to me as sort of, not that we're teaching to the Park, but some of the types of questions that one would answer on the Park, read this passage now, you know, which sentence best encapsulates? I assume it would not be all multiple choice like the Park.
So it's condensing information and, you know?
Yeah, that, right, right, right.
Answering multiple-choice questions?
Well, I don't know if it'd be multiple-choice questions. I assume it'd be, you know, analyze this text, you know, pull out the theme, which sentence, you know, is the, stuff we saw at Bartle, but on a higher level, which sentence best encapsulates the theme, which sentence best.
Will this be offered to the students, this information, before they sign up for these electives?
Yeah, we have a program guide.
Do you have like a synopsis of this that you could read for us?
We do in the description that we gave to the board, but we're going to flesh it out more carefully when we give it to the kids, so that they make a informed decision. They're not going to be at a board meeting being able to ask us questions like you guys were asking.
Okay, but could you read to us whatever you're looking at?
Sure.
When did, I don't remember getting this.
Because we've seen different descriptions of it, I think. Now I can't find the course description.
Students have demonstrated a need for further instruction in the following areas, and this is where we describe what the focus of the class will be: reading historical and information texts, research writing, and analysis of texts. We talk a little bit about this being also a RAC-identified need. This course will strengthen our students' reading of informational texts while they build their skills as writers when creating argument essays and research writing.
Yeah, so it's that more technical piece.
So, yeah, some of it's not, yeah, not technical in the way, like, when you think about technical writing as a field, you think about people who write programming guides, or people who write scientific, you know, so it's not that kind of technical writing. It's a RAC need, means the RAC wants us to offer this to students to voluntarily take it, or are we going to be trying to encourage?
Well, it's part of our school-approved plan to focus on this area.
Are we going to be encouraging students to take this class?
No, I mean, one of the options, one of the advantages to expanding our elective options is to give kids more choices instead of dumping them into classes.
Right, right.
Unfortunately, as Mrs. Osebye pointed out, a lot of students were placed into study halls when we didn't have other elective options for them.
Right, right.
So by expanding, and here we're doing it by threefold, not by threefold, adding three courses, we're able to slot kids in other places if we need to.
So this is learn how to read really boring nonfiction texts, and then write stuff about the really boring nonfiction texts.
So the students, the students will be able to conference with their parents once they, will they be able to conference with their parents before signing up for these courses?
Of course.
Yeah.
All but the summer.
So, okay.
Suggestions?
No, I'm thinking that a lot of parents would be like, yes.
Ah, yes.
You know, and the kids will be like, oh, God, you know? So I'm just imagining that scenario playing out in my house, and I apologize.
You know, what always happens in these cases, if we have a student who is not interested in something, we're going to confer with the parent guardian and say, hey, look, maybe one of the, it's no different than if a student selects, self-selects to take an AP course at the high school, and just, we feel was compelled to do so, and is only extrinsically motivated to be there, we're going to have a heart-to-heart with the parent guardian and say, hey, maybe one reason, one potential reason why your child's not performing is because he or she really doesn't, is not interested in being here. And it's no different than the electives.
Wait a minute, Scott, excuse me, I finally located the email with the course approval forms, which I'd already read, but it says it's a cycle class at the middle school. Is that, has that been changed now, it's actually an elective? I had understood it was a cycle class to allow all students to allow, or to give all students access to additional ELA time, and so that all students would be required to take this class. Had I realized it was an elective, I'm not sure my reaction would have been.
Well, that's not going to be the case. As we say in the, on the first, on the top of the form, this is, we select the elective option.
Oh, I see that in the narrative, under, in the three sentences under the word prerequisites, it says it's a cycle class.
Oh, periods and credits. Oh, you know what, I think what we're staying is that it's going to get the credit of a cycle class, or it's going to be offered during that class.
Oh, during that period?
But it's still an elective.
I see, I missed the X up there, thank you.
So because of the AB schedule, one day might be the cycle, the other day might be the elective.
Scheduled as a cycle, I see. Got it, thank you.
No problem. I'm sorry for the confusion.
No, no, it's fine.
All right. So if we don't have any other questions about curriculum, Michelle, you're done, yes?
I could go through the Professional Development Plan, but I think that it's under review for August 21st, so I'm going to save it.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. We still have a few reports to get through, so let's do that. So we'll move on to Finance and Facilities. Mark's isn't here, but Rob, you're going to play Mark on TV?
I will, yes. So going to go through, we did meet as a group this evening, the Finance and Facilities Committee, and part of that meeting was a presentation from a representative from our insurance broker, who went through our current and future insurance policy coverage terms. That was, that was helpful. We will be moving an item related to that discussion this evening. Friday, we received the grant allocation notice for ESEA that was formerly known as NCLB, No Child Left Behind. We were expecting significant decreases in funding, but the amounts ended up being similar to last year's amounts, Title I increased by about $6,000. We did receive a new grant, yes, that is good, Title IV to be used for student supports and academic enrichment in the amount of $10,000.
Nice, that's from ESSO?
Yes, and also our Title III funding for ESL students increased by over $10,000. So that's, that was very positive information for us. We did also receive notice last week of the increase of just over $200,000 in our state aid allotment. Darcy is going to be going through in her President's Report and talking about that, but that, that number is an increase over the number that we had budgeted. Also Friday, we received notice that we will be receiving $347,000 plus in extraordinary special ed aid. Now, we had included an estimate of $200,000 in this upcoming year's budget, so the difference, difference being about $147,000, is the amount that's actually at our disposal. So we had budgeted the plus 200. We are going to be receiving 347, so the difference of $147,000 is what we can now count on as additional money in our budget. Both the state aid and extraordinary aid excess amounts may be used to help support this upcoming year's budget. If we do not end up needing it, we will definitely be needing any excess funds that we can get, because we have used up all of our banked cap. So the only property tax increase that's available to us would be allowances due to increasing health benefits costs in excess of 4%.
Pardon my ignorance on this, so with all those monies you talked about, the special ed, extraordinary aid, the Title IV, and the just general state aid, do those all have time restrictions, like, we can only use them this year, or we can use that, we can integrate that into our?
I'm going to ask Linda to address that.
So the extraordinary aid we receive every year, we are, because it was for, it was actually for the 2016, '17 year, but because we don't get it until we're already into this year, we don't have time to spend it, so the state allows us the subsequent year, which would be the 2017, '18 year, to use that money, increase our budget to cover any additional costs. If it doesn't get used, it will either be allocated during budget time to help support next year's budget, the '18, '19 budget, or it will lapse into excess surplus if there is undesigned funds.
I see, but it can be used in the '18, '19 budget.
We have the '17, '18 year to use it, and then anything that's left over, we can anticipate it during budget time. It's called budgeted fund balance, it's just a term, but we can use that to help to support the needs of the '18, '19 budget.
Great, this is not any kind of like, use it or lose it stuff, good, in terms of timing.
And this is just like, this is like a small fraction of the money that we spend on special ed.
I know, I know.
You know, we get this like, minuscule percentage of it back, so that's what this, right.
I mean, we have a list, I think, of all this, well, a number of special ed expenditures on here, which is quite striking.
Now, Linda, don't go too far away, because I was going to ask you to update us on the TEMCO, there's a line item number 12 on our agenda, which includes, which talks about expenditures for the TEMCO personnel that do our maintenance work for us, and I understand you met with them, and we are working towards some sort of agreement. Maybe you can fill us in.
Yes, so last month, the board approved the renewal of the TEMCO contract. At that time, we thought we were pretty close to the final negotiations with the two maintenance staff members that are currently employed by TEMCO, but we just couldn't finish the process in time for July 1st. We did meet today, and I believe that we've come to some agreeable terms, which the board will now consider, and our plan is that we would put that on the agenda for the August meeting to approve, to hire them as district staff, which would become effective September 1st. So due to just the timing of the process, we needed those extra two months with those two members of TEMCO staff to remain with TEMCO. So this, this is just to modify the TEMCO contract for those two months to include those two staff members.
Right, and so the benefit, maybe just fill us in on, what is the benefit to us to do it this way?
Well, do you want to fill this? Okay. Well, there's, there's always the benefit of having them be part of our team, you know, they, they'll be part of our family, they'll have the loyal, you know, they'll be more loyal to us, and I think that their priorities will be more centered on the district. And also, the management of the projects will be a little more streamlined and take a lot less time and effort than going through an outside contractor for the types of work that they do, which is more specialized.
Great, so that's helpful, thanks. We will be discussing the 2016, '17 year-end financial projections, as well as unanticipated '17, '18 expenses and revenues at the August meeting. So with regard to the agenda that we are going to be looking at moving tonight, Items 1 through 11 are the typical bill lists, Board Secretary Budget Transfer Reports for April and May, Treasurer's Report for February, and Travel Spreadsheet. Item number 12 is the item that Linda just described regarding the contract with TEMCO. Number 13 is the insurance renewal, so we are going to be renewing with UTICA, which has been our insurance provider, and NJ SBA Insurance Group. We did send out requests for proposals out to companies who provide insurance to school districts, and it was decided that this is the, indeed, the best direction to go, to continue. The final two proposals were virtually the same dollar-wise, and the continuation with UTICA was deemed to be helpful in terms of the stability that that would provide. Item 14 is additional summer ESY out-of-district placement for classified student, 15 home instruction services, these are our standard items, 16 professional services related to educational service for next year. 17, we received a donation of science equipment, glass flasks, for use in our STEM program. And item 18 is the 2017, '18 school year out-of-district placements for classified students. So, other questions?
Anybody have anything for Rob? No? Okay, not seeing any questions, thank you, Rob. We'll move on to Personnel and Communications with Judy.
Okay, we did meet back on July 5th, which was a while ago, so if I've forgotten anything, Anne, you need to jump right in.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so the bulk of our meeting was talking about a item on the agenda tonight, which is a proposal to change the part-time supervisor of ed services to a full-time position. So the person right now is doing supervisory responsibilities part of the time and is a case manager the rest of the time. This would shift her responsibilities to have a very light caseload and assist the Director of Educational Services in a lot of different ways. So we invited Suzie Boudin to come to the meeting to fill us in about why she believes she needed this position, and she needed this position, and so I'll just give a little overview of that. First of all, one of the main issues we've been having is our homeless students have increased up to 27 families, which is a huge increase, and we really needed to continue to reach out for community resources to help support these families, and that would be one main responsibility for this person. The other issue we've had is ESL needs are rising rapidly, and we want to make sure that we're able to stay in compliance. Also, just supporting the current child study team staff and teachers to make sure they're getting the support they need. The ed supervisor was concerned that a lot of times when teachers have questions or need support, she can't get back to them as quickly as she wanted to because she has so much on her plate, so this was an area that she wanted to have assistance with. She also wants to see more best practices used across the board, not have anything different from building to building. That was one of her other goals. Oh, and because Suzie wanted to take a bigger role herself in doing, pushing coaching for differential instruction, so she wanted to be able to have more time to do that. And this person would also help her with evaluations. The person has done some evaluation of, I believe it's the nurses, but she continued to do that and pick up a little more. She would maintain, I think it was 10 of her students that are seniors, she didn't want to end that now, so she would still, next year, do some of that. So, that was one topic that took up a lot of the meeting. Anne, do you have anything else to add to that?
I mean, just that she really emphasized how committed the district was to inclusion and to starting to train teachers and educate teachers and talk with teachers about best practices for inclusion. Not that we're going to suddenly like, have this huge transformation, but that she wants to get the process started, and that that, you know, that's a huge, huge structural transformation that, of course, we would just be in the very infancy of even thinking about. But she emphasized that that was something she was really committed to, and so, you know, in order to do that, and all of her other responsibilities, including responding to, you know, the usual number of lawsuits.
Lawsuits, things like that, right.
Lawsuits, the inordinate amount of paperwork that accompanies her job, that it really was necessary to have somebody else in the loop.
Right.
And I think after lots of questions, lots of concerns, lots and lots of discussion, Ruth was able to join us at our meeting to apply her particular expertise. I think the committee felt satisfied that this was really something that was necessary, particularly if we were going to continue to push Suzie and Scott to act on some of our board goals. And not that they wouldn't be working on it anyway, but...
Yes.
That was not very articulate.
Okay. And then, we also went over the agenda, and let me flip through here. Most of the agenda items are the typical, you know, well, post-contract, we have a number of salary adjustments that are listed, so let me just go through here really quickly. So, we have on the agenda approval of substitute teachers through Source, and then items 2 and 3, and 4, and 5, and 6, and 7, 8, 9, 10, are all salary adjustments post-contract. Number 11 is the approval of summer hours for Kim Crane over at Bartle. Number 12 is good news. Number 12 is the approval of a special ed teacher at the high school. We are asking tonight for support of the board to hire Ardricka Bottom-Williams, and I have her...
Ms. Pitcher-Bono, do you mind if I say a few words about her while you're looking for that?
Yes, please.
So, she did spend a few months with us as a replacement teacher when Ms. Hackett left. Did a wonderful job. Mr. Alastair was recommending her. Couple of comments that he shared with me. She was very effective in her engagement of all grade levels of the special ed students with whom she worked. She had a particular knack for establishing strong relationships with them, especially with the work that she did in the GLOW program with Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller was actually very excited when we indicated that we're going to be recommending Ardricka. She was picked up right where we needed her to with final exams, wrote her own, with some consult from her Janet Pierce. Showed great initiative, and she happens to also help bolster our ranks among our minority teachers. She's African-American, that's helpful because of our sizable African-American population at the high school.
And didn't you find her when you were doing the...
Oh, yeah.
...Moncler also?
At Moncler. We actually found her at the Moncler recruiting fair. I scouted out, as our principals were working at the table, I worked the floor, and I saw her just standing there, and I said, "Hey, why don't you come over to our table?" And she threw her resume in the hat, hired her for a replacement job, and here she is.
So, that's good news.
Fantastic.
Number 13 is not as good news. We thought we had a replacement tonight for the media specialist over at Bartle, but that person has taken her name out of the running, so we are back to looking to advertise for a full-time school media specialist at Bartle and a part-time, still have to fill the part-time position over at Irving. So, we'll just, we'll be taking 13 off the agenda. 14 is just the approval of the before-and-after-school program staff. We have a request for maternity, disability, child care, leave of absence, number 15. 16, I discussed with you that it would be the full-time supervisor of ed services. We have a resignation tonight of, sadly, of Anthony Miller, who is a para at the middle school. We also have a resignation of Schedule B Position Videoographer, Christopher Brzezinski. Number 19 is the approval of some summer home instructors for this summer. Not really too much else to know. And also, at the committee meeting, we did discuss what we were talking about before with the middle school French teacher, any personnel. We always evaluate any changes to personnel to see how we're doing, and... Oh, we do have the approval of the curriculum writing for the new positions that we talked about, so 26 and 27, we'll include that. Yep, and more summer hours for the nurses, pretty standard stuff.
I have a quick question about 22. Can you give a little more information about that? I don't quite understand what that means, assistance in writing lesson plans?
I can clarify for you if you'd like.
Yes.
We've been struggling to fill all of our positions for ESY, so we want to hire somebody to write the lesson plans for the Source for Teachers sub we're bringing in for the ESY program.
This, the current ESY?
This year, correct. This summer. Yeah, we're still, we're still have a couple of open spots, including the, now the paraprofessional position that Mr. Miller has left. So, we're asking that the board approve us to have Samantha supplement the lesson plans.
So, we have, right now, our extended school year program has Source for Teachers substitutes using...
Correct.
Whoa, okay.
We haven't been able to...
How does that happen? People usually fight over those positions.
I hear you. We're short, we're short.
Do we know, do we know that going in? Like, was this something that came up a while ago to do this?
We've been trying to fill the positions since April.
Wow, wow.
How many positions are we short?
I'm sorry?
How many positions are we short?
Just the one paraprofessional and the one teacher.
Okay.
And the paraprofessional only came up recently because of Mr. Miller, but the teacher we've been struggling with for a couple of months to fill. And we're willing to hire outside candidates, as we have.
Wow, okay.
All right, are there any other questions on personnel? Nope, okay. Not seeing any, we will move on to policy, Anne.
All right. The agenda is pretty self-explanatory. We are recommending that the board adopt the listed policies. We've gone over them two or three times now. The only changes from our last meeting at which we adopted them on first reading, or I'm sorry, we passed them for first reading, are typographical errors, nothing that changes the meaning of the policies. I'd be happy to read more about them, but I think the board's pretty familiar with them. Anybody has questions?
I thought they looked great.
Oh, thank you so much. Susan did a lovely job adding some commas.
I thought they were very nicely formatted and looked fantastic.
Thank you, Susan.
All right, does anybody have any questions on any of the policies for Anne? Nope? Okay. So, Equity and Excellence, we don't have Charisse here, but I know you guys did, you met tonight? No?
No, no.
You didn't end up meeting?
I was the only one available, and I got a five-minute quick synopsis on, that I need to bring back to Rob and Charisse. I don't really have anything to report out, just that...
Well, the only thing the board's going to get is a statement of assurance. It has to approve for the Department of Ed that points out that we're continually updating the comprehensive equity plan. Mr. Magisner, Ruth, to tell you, we've, the Equity and Excellence Committee's been working really closely with Jen now this year since she's returned for maternity on that, so that'll happen in August. Once she, at the sign, the board signs off on you.
And I'll add one thing, and I'm kicking myself that I forgot to bring it, but not this past Sunday, this Sunday before, Scott wasn't available and Charisse wasn't available, so I went down to Johnson Park and attended a picnic that was being hosted by Interfaith Rise.
Oh, nice.
And it was a lovely event, and they awarded a number of certificates to community partners throughout Middlesex County who they feel have been helpful in their refugee resettlement efforts, and they awarded one of those certificates to the district, which was very nice. So, I was there to gratefully accept that and got to say a few words to everybody who was there, and it was lovely. And I apologize for not remembering to bring it tonight. I sat down in the finance meeting and went, "Gah!" But I will endeavor to remember to bring that, and we'll have it in Scott's office, so he can display it there. But it was a, it was a really nice event with just like, an amazing mix of people and lots of kids running around and face painting and water balloons, and it was just, it was very lovely.
We like our face painting in Highland Park.
So, it was a very, very nice event, and it was lovely of them to think to single out the district, so. Okay, so if no one has any questions about that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is public comment. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation, is reserved this time for your comments. If you'd like to make public comment, you can come up to the podium, leave your name and address, or where you're from, or...
One question before I get started. The teacher that I'm...
Just trying to make sure to make you use the microphone, so everybody at home can hear you.
Better. This is my first time.
There you go.
The teacher that I'm going to speak on behalf, can I mention her name now? She's not on the agenda at all, or can I just say teacher?
No, I think it's okay.
It's okay?
Yeah, you can. I mean, we can't discuss personnel, but you can.
It's all right for me to go with it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Taylor, all the board members for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, I'm sorry, could you just introduce yourself and state your name?
Sure. My name is Jeanne Levens, and I am a paraprofessional at Irving School, and I work in the ABA room. I've been in this room for about seven years now. The teacher I'm working for is Caitlin Fettko. She was hired for maternity leave, and after that, full-time as a district employee. My understanding is that she was supposed to be approved tonight by the board for this position, but after reading the agenda, I didn't see her name anywhere, and also, I noticed that the ABA teaching position has been posted, so I became a little concerned because Caitlin is an excellent teacher. Her love for the children shines through in everything that she does. Her dedication to them and to making the program work effectively is evident to everyone who's associated with our class. I've learned so much from her already in the short time that I've been working with her, and I actually look forward every day to going into Irving to watch her work. The classroom is structured and organized, which is especially important for our children. This September, I'm going to be in the district 19 years, and I've worked with many different teachers, and I can honestly say that Ms. Fettko is one of the best teachers that I've ever worked with, and I've had the pleasure to be with over the past one or two. I'm with her with the summer program now also. When she first came into our classroom, after about 30 minutes to an hour, I said to my colleague, Johani, I said, "This girl is the real deal." And she is, she's the real deal, she's that good. Also, in the 19 years, I've never spoken before the board for any reason, but I felt it necessary to come, you know, to come out tonight, to come forward, to speak on her behalf, because I truly believe it would be in the best interest of our children if she was hired as their teacher. So, I would respectfully request that the board consider Ms. Fettko for the full-time ABA teaching position. And again, I want to thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter.
Thank you so much for coming to let us know. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here for the same reason as Ms. Levens.
I'm sorry, could you just state your name and everything for the record?
Sure.
I'm so sorry, thank you.
My name is Johani Cudaro. I work in the Highland Park School District at the Irving Primary School as a para, Assistant Special Education student for the past six years. I've been working in the capacity for a total of 15 years with expressionist students, all here in the state of New Jersey. During my time working in this capacity, I've had an opportunity to work alongside many educators and paraprofessionals that have been, that have been devoted their professional life to the, to the unique skills of working expressionist students. I felt it was important to share with all of you my personal experience while working with Caitlin Fettko during this past school year. Ms. Fettko consistently, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, demonstrated that she had skills necessary to be effective as special education, education teacher. Her classroom is highly organized, as she is very capable and highly focused individual. Her students were always treated with kindness and dealt with the loving patience they required. Ms. Fettko demonstrated an ability to reach each individual child's needs while creating a positive educational environment for the entire classroom. It is my professional opinion that Ms. Fettko is an asset to our school district and to our students. She has proven that she can work well with our assistance group of teachers and is well liked and respected by both parents and staff. I will humbly and professionally recommend that you consider retaining Ms. Fettko as a teacher for the Irving Primary School. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You shouldn't have been nervous, you did great. Don't be nervous. Thank you both so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Any other public comment? Okay. Since I asked so nicely.
Keith Presti, HPEA President, an instrumental music teacher. I was just wondering, it's only been a month, but just want to keep it on the board's mind, and wondering if there was any movement on the instrumental program, specifically the small group instruction at the middle school. I don't know if there's any update on that, but...
I don't have an update for you. I'm sorry. But it's something I could follow up with you in a couple of weeks after I talk to Mrs. O.
Great.
Can you, one second, Keith, go back. Can you just remind everybody again exactly what that discussion was?
So, the middle school this past 16-17 year incorporated... So the middle school this past 16, 17-year incorporated the band program as a class where all the students would meet together during a period during the elective time. However, that removed the pull-out, small-group instruction piece of the program, which is a very necessary piece of the program. That's where all the instruction takes place on the individual instruments and the technique and how to play the instrument. And then the large group is for how to put it all together. So that piece is missing right now. We have the dual program at Bartle School where they have a pull-out lesson and then large ensemble practice, which happens after school. So there's lots of models in other districts that do it successfully, and I'm happy to meet with anybody and go over things and be creative.
Are there any districts currently that you know of that are doing it with only that one, you know, whole-group band lesson? Or is everybody doing this more?
I don't really know of a program, I'm sure there are, but I don't really know of a program, a successful program, that doesn't have both pieces. And usually at the middle school level, they will pull from like PhysEd and things like that so as not to, you know, conflict with the core subjects.
Is that an option that the middle school is, is that an option that the middle school is looking at?
It is. I haven't explored that with Mrs. O, but I'll make a note to talk to her when she gets back from vacation. Then I'll follow up with you.
Yeah, I'd like to have a timeline for that.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, this is something that's potentially kind of urgent for the program, I would imagine. Is Ms. O back from vacation with a good amount of time before the school year starts, or is she gone for a month? Is she in the south of France for a month, or she should be back soon, Ms. O?
She'll be back in a couple of days.
In a couple of days. I'm sorry for her.
One model that I'm accustomed to in Little Silver, for instance, at the middle school there, we pulled the kids out of class. So not PE, but we would randomly pull students out. We'd pull students out of random classes, so not one core class got hit every time.
Yeah, usually, and how we do it at Bartle School and how it's been done in the past is you set up a rotating schedule so that, you know, depending on how many periods you can actually pull from, say you can pull from all of them, then you would only miss the same part of a course every eight weeks or nine weeks, or fewer if you're only pulling from five classes. So that has something to do with it as well.
And did we decide that we didn't want students to be missing one out of every eight or nine? That was the decision made?
Well, I think more of the, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I think more of the issue there was that it, because of schedules, there were very few periods that could be pulled from, so the same two periods were hit over and over and over again.
I see. And that's irresolvable with our scheduling system?
I'll look into it. I promise to follow up on that.
Okay, so maybe in August, we'll hear more about it.
I'll be here.
Keep bringing it up.
Okay.
Thank you, Keith.
Great. Thank you, Scott.
All right. Since we don't have any other public, I think that automatically means that we move on to moving our agenda items. So we start off with Michelle. Michelle, could you move the curriculum and instruction items?
Yes, I would like to move items one through nine, please. And that is, I mentioned it before, but we're going to be tabling number two. So that is one, and then three through nine.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Okay, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFerranti-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to Finance and Facilities. Rob, could you move those items for us?
Yes, I'd like to move items one through 18.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Okay, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFerranti-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. Personnel, Judy, could you move those items, please?
Sure. I'd like to move items one to 12. We're taking number 13 off the agenda, and then we're moving numbers 14 through 34.
Okay. Can we get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Okay, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Magaziner?
I'm going to abstain from 10 and vote yes on the rest.
Ms. McFerranti-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, and finally, Ann, policies and regulations, could you move the policies, please?
Yes, certainly. I'd like to move number one on the policy agenda, subparts A through L.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Everyone just sick of looking at these policies?
Yes.
Okay. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFerranti-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
A no to H and I, and yes on the remainder.
Okay, so we don't have anything to move for Equity and Excellence, so we'll move on to our board liaison reports.
Could I interrupt with a comment about policies? Is that no, not really?
We already voted on them.
Could I make a comment?
Oh, you mean in general?
A comment, could I make a comment to someone in the, you know, not about the voting. Could I make a comment to somebody who's in the audience?
Okay.
About, Keith, you had asked if we could give you sort of a heads-up when there's a policy affecting, you know, student, teacher conduct, and that would be these policies. So perhaps someone could send...
As soon as tomorrow.
Sorry?
We may be able to as soon as tomorrow.
Excellent.
Describe those policies.
Just a heads-up. Should be on the website soon, too.
Okay, so we'll move on to the liaison reports.
Josh should not attend the last alliance meeting.
Josh, okay.
But he will continue his work next year for us.
Okay, wonderful. Michelle, do you have anything from HPTV or Public Information?
I did go to the Public Information meeting, and I do not have my notes, unfortunately, so I'm going to have to email those to the rest of the board, and then I'll report on that in August.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Rob, Magaziner, do you have anything for us from the HPEF?
Well, I did attend the meeting, but it was a very light kind of summary meeting. And so honestly, there's nothing to report at this time.
Okay. It's summer. It's kind of like that.
Yeah.
Judy, or is the Commission for Universal Access taking the summer off, too?
Not July, but they are taking August off, and they're actually changing their meeting dates when they start in September, so sometimes they will conflict with...
With more meetings.
Monday.
Oh, dear.
Yeah, so Tara, who is the head of the Commission, said she would keep me up to date when I can't attend, so we'll just see, I guess, how that works out.
Okay.
But yeah, it wasn't, that was a pretty light meeting, but let me think. Oh, well, I want to just give them a shout-out for a couple of, I think, really wonderful things that they did. So I think I remember mentioning a while back about a summer program that was going to be held for students. It was like a theater camp for children that had visual disabilities and other things. And so they provided scholarships for the children from Highland Park that were on the free and reduced lunch. So we had a number of students go, and I thought that was wonderful. And then also, remember when the Glow student, Students in the Glow Program were selling, I think it was the jars of, was it hot chocolate or something like that?
Yep.
Okay, so one of the people on the Commission, one of the officers in town on his own dime had bought some and then gave them to the, some seniors at the Senior Citizens Center, and it was very well received.
Oh, great.
So this year, the Commission authorized money from the Commission, so he could buy some more and...
That's fantastic.
...make seniors happy.
That's so cool.
That's really cute.
Yes.
Just as a give-back to the community. I don't know if you noticed, but if you look at some storefronts around town, you'll see a Glow decal on the window. Those are the small businesses that have supported our kids' job site work.
That's awesome. I didn't realize. You should start taking pictures of those, posting them on social media around and about town.
Hashtag AllNHP, please.
I love it. That was about it that I can think of that related to the schools, but they're doing some great work.
Great. Thank you, Judy. Scott, do we have anything from Suzanne?
No, but June 24th is the next meeting that she'll be attending.
June 24th?
July 24th, forgive me. I'm wishing us another month of summer.
All right. And then Shared Services for me, we haven't had another meeting since our last meeting, which I think was in May, so I will keep everybody updated if we have another meeting. Ruth, anything on CPAC?
Nothing to report?
Nothing, okay. And Sharice isn't here for Post-Soc. Ann, anything from Human Relations?
Let's see, I regrettably missed the June meeting because it was conflicted with graduation, but I will have hopefully some information for our next meeting to report once I get the agenda from Ashton. At the May meeting, let's see, what happened? What did we discuss that had to do with schools? There was a lot of general discussion at the May meeting, sort of throwing around ideas, and a number of members of the Commission expressed concern about our suspension policy here in HP, and I was able to share that, you know, we are working on some restorative justice, I'm sorry, some restorative practices, I guess is the term, not just restorative justice. And it's possible that we'll be getting one of them reaching out to you to talk about that. It's something they're interested in. It wasn't a formal agenda item, so I'm not sure, don't be an organized reach-out as, as, you know, they seem to be intending. There's also a lot of concern expressed about social media issues and bullying, and some thought to you, reaching out to you to try to do some kind of like joint presentation or joint program to help educate kids on the topic. I think Officer Curbelo, yeah, Officer Curbelo was there, and he expressed that this was definitely an issue at the middle school. Is that, do we have like a formalized?
We do.
We do?
Well, we do for the parents, the Teen Center runs, and unfortunately, we haven't gotten a great turnout. We've just got to be more creative about how to attract people. Probably one of the better things we could do is to build it around back-to-school night, where we know we have a captivated audience.
We have a captive audience, yeah.
Well, there's got to be ways to deliver the content to kids during school time. I mean, there's all kinds of...
No, no, I'm sorry, just for parents, you're all right.
What about with kids? Do we incorporate that? I mean, I know that we have a student representative now, or the Commission does, Kaylee Wharton, and she shared at one meeting, I think that, oh, maybe that was a different topic. I don't remember what she shared, actually, about the health curriculum, whether social media safety and stuff like that was covered in health, or...
You know what? That's not being covered in K-5 health, but I...
I meant, I think, I was talking more about like middle school, high school.
I don't foresee it being, we're revising the curriculum now, and I don't see that being built into the program, but I...
It's such a huge part of kids' lives, you know? I mean, and at the end of fifth grade, you know, there was a situation that my daughters were, you know...
On social media, right?
Well, no, just texting.
Oh, texting.
I mean, like, they don't even, yeah, I mean, they just, hordes of them get into like a texting string, and then it's like, it's like the more kids that are in it, the crazier it gets.
I had no idea.
And the more their like inhibitions dissipate, and, you know, my daughters, you know, start coming to me with their iPods, like, "What's that?", you know, like just freaking out at the things that kids are, you know, putting out there on, you know. So they need some, I need guidance.
And I'd be shocked if we didn't offer something, and I have to find out what it is and then follow up with the board.
And I think, I mean, Sharice, I think Sharice had found something, wasn't it from the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office?
Yes.
That they have, you know, a program that they'll come in and run for free, you know, like, and, you know, we're not off, you know, advocating, you know?
Crazy talk.
There's also NetSmarts. You can find them on Facebook, but they also have something that you can do. They have the whole program set up, a PowerPoint and videos that go with it that you can do in-house. You don't need to have somebody come in and do it.
Yeah.
And Human Relations is definitely interested, so I don't know if, I mean, we already have access to Officer Curbelo, who's on the Commission. I'm not sure that's terribly helpful. I was going to say, I mean, it seems like something that could, in middle school, possibly be integrated into some of the bi-weekly, is it bi-weekly or semi-weekly? The twice-a-week meetings, you know, community-building meetings, I mean, that might be a topic for discussion. I don't know, you know, our community and how our community extends beyond the physical world.
Well, it absolutely does now.
I mean, it seems like a huge issue, as we've seen in some of our reports that we've looked at in executive session.
Oh, you know where it comes up? They do it in the technology curriculum that we're now totally rewriting into Makerspace. They do a whole unit on that.
My son was apparently asleep when that happened. Are you out there, son?
It could be something we cycle through, continue to do with the kids in Makerspace.
And also, I really think it does belong in the health curriculum. I do...
I don't know where I got that. I think somebody told me that it was, or was going to be.
Ann, I do want to add one thing to the report, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
I've been working with a subcommittee of HP Post-Soc led by Lucinda Holt. They're looking at ways we can commemorate the 40th anniversary of the desegregation of Highland Park Schools.
Ah, great.
So right now, we're going to do two things. I'm tasking Suzanne Ackley to work with the ELA teachers at the middle high school and lower-grade teachers to do something within the curriculum, at least next year, if not for long-term, to recognize the historical event. And we're also going to set up a webpage, I'm not sure where we're going to put it, but somewhere on our website that will focus just on archiving all of the information about the 40th anniversary, including the Historical Society's compilation of articles, which I think I shared with the board a couple of months ago.
Yeah, it's fascinating.
That'll probably be one of the first things we put up there.
Great. Okay, so Ann, if you don't have anything else for Human Relations, we don't have... So delegated to New Jersey school boards, we haven't really done this, I don't think, since the May, right? I haven't updated you guys since the May delegate assembly, which unfortunately, at the last minute, I wasn't able to go to because of lots of conflicting scheduling things that happened in my immediate family. But I did follow up with other delegates who went to find out what happened, and the one resolution that we were particularly concerned about, because it started with our resolution that then went to Edison and then turned into, you know, like, "We just don't want charters in high-performing suburban districts." Whatever happens to the rest of you guys, we don't really care, but we went... So apparently, that caused just like a massive ruckus at the delegate assembly, where they toyed with lots of different versions of language that may have been acceptable, and then ultimately, it was just tabled. And, and I think, just like, I don't know if forwarded is the right word, but like, referred, that's the word I'm looking for, referred to a subcommittee to further look at what New Jersey School Boards Association's policy would be moving forward related to charter schools. So, of course, being the nosy-nelly that I am on this particular issue, I took it upon myself to email the New Jersey School Boards Association's Executive Director, Larry Feinsad, and offer myself up for that subcommittee, and actually asked him to meet with him about, on the topic. So, I think it was in early June, I had a meeting with, it was kind of funny, this tends to be what happens when I ask for a meeting with someone, I ask for a meeting with one person, they go, "Sure, and then you'll also meet with our General Counsel" and our Director of, who else did he have in the room? It was like me and five other people, I was like, "Ah, okay." The General Counsel, the Legislative Director, a few other people, I don't even remember off the top of my head, but I mean, we had a very interesting conversation where I tried to, you know, get across to them, you know, why they saw, the response that they saw to that, to that resolution, and to again, offer myself for that subcommittee, but so far, they're not taking me up on my offer, I don't understand why.
You're so willing.
I'll let you know if they change their minds and put me on that subcommittee, because, I mean, I think, I think they could use a few more voices on that committee that, you know...
What makes you say that?
Or one particular voice, yeah. No, but seriously, you know, I think it's, it's, there was a lot of, what concerned me was there was a lot of language in the school board's position to that resolution that was like, "Well, this is what the law says, and the law says that charter schools are good, and the law says that charter schools are, you know, they are there to benefit the district," and, you know, and things that just aren't playing out in reality, you know, on the ground, and they need more kind of realistic...
Realism?
Perspectives on that, so, we'll see, but sometimes, I guess I'm just too realistic for people's liking.
Never, never stop, please.
So, okay, so that's the end of our liaison reports, which brings us to my President's Report, which I wanted to talk with everybody about an update to what Rob laid out for us previously, which is this additional state aid that has come our way after commissions, you know, what it was that, I can't even remember how long ago it was that me and Scott and Mark Krieger went to one of these commission meetings that Senate President Sweeney was holding, and he had put together a whole commission to go around the state to look at state funding, and, you know, and then you probably remember, in the budget, Governor Christie, you know, kind of laid down this, like, "If you don't, if you don't compromise with me on this," you know, it's just been a very, very strange year in regards to school funding, the outcome of which was just, they seemed to take some money away from some districts and give it to others. And there was a small other pool of money that they appropriated from other places, but it was very strange, actually, the document that we got from the state actually earmarked, "This much of this money is money that we took from other districts, and this much of this money is from new appropriations," which was very bizarre for me to see. So, you know, of like the $200,000 that we got, like, it was like 40-something thousand, we just, we took that from them over there and we gave it to them over here.
Can I ask you if they gave an explanation?
Um, you know, how they did all these calculations, I don't know if anybody knows exactly what these calculations were based on. I think with particularly, some of the districts that the most money was taken from were like Jersey City and Hoboken, where I think the feeling is, is that they're, I don't know if it's that they're both above adequacy and they're, what's, what's the term, Linda, for fair share, right? Like, they're below their fair share but above adequacy, so they're not, their taxpayers aren't contributing enough, so like where in our districts, you know, 80-some-odd percent of our budget is being funded by, is it 80-something percent at this point, is being funded by the taxpayers, and only, you know, in the low teens is being funded by the states. In those districts, it's the opposite, but there's a property tax base there now in places like Jersey and City and Hoboken that could potentially support it. So, it, there's, there's so many moving pieces to all of this, it's hard to kind of, you know, give a good synopsis on it.
Or maybe their mayor's didn't endorse his last run for governor.
Well, no, I mean, you know, in Jersey City, for instance, I mean, there's actually a huge, I don't know if you've seen this, there's actually like a huge movement underway to push Fullup, Steve Fullup, because he is giving away so many abatements. There's so much development and construction going on, and he's giving out tax abatements left, right, and center. So, community members in Jersey City are like, "Hey, wait a minute, you know, like, how come they're not paying any taxes for X number of years when our schools are struggling, when we're..." So, I mean, there are real issues there.
Because gentrification.
I mean, I am not against, you know, the idea of political retribution in the state, but in this case, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure that that's, that was the prime motivating factor. End of the day, our district is getting $208,000 and change, and we need to decide where that money is going to go. So, it automatically just goes into our operating budget for this year, correct, Linda?
Yes.
So, then the question is, what do we do with that money? One of the options, and, you know, we need to put that out there publicly, is we could just turn around and give all that money back as a rebate to taxpayers.
I hear people at home right now, do you hear that?
Right.
What was that noise?
What does that mean? Does that mean next year's tax bill would be lowered by that amount?
No, yes, so the tax bills are being prepared as we speak, they're like, they're delayed right now, actually, because of all of these budget shenanigans that went on. So, actually, we need to let the borough know by Friday what we intend to do with this money, whether we intend to hold on to the money and put it into our operating budget, whether we intend to give it back to the taxpayers, what we intend to do with it. So, you know, we had some discussion about this in finance, Mark and I have had some discussions with this, I've had some discussions with Scott, I've had some discussions with Gail, we've, there's been lots of discussions going on. Mark did kind of a, what do he calls a back of the, is it the back of the napkin or back of the envelope, wherever, wherever the back of whatever that you do these calculations, he did those calculations and figured it's about, if we were to give it as a tax rebate, it would be about $15, a $15 rebate for the average property owner. So, we're not talking like, you know, a land, you know...
It's a nice lunch, I mean...
Right.
Well, the thing is, is, well, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I mean, that can be a meaningful amount of money for, for our school system, but $12 or $15 doesn't sound like a meaningful amount.
No, if it was like 200 even, which sounds miniscule, that would be, you know, significant enough to consider.
Right.
Right, and, you know, I think when we're discussing these things, we need to, you know, look at multiple factors. The first one that comes to my mind is how underfunded we've been for the last two terms of this governor.
They owe us $6 million, isn't that right?
Uh, it's actually quite more, I was actually pulling it up as I started talking. To date, of course, now my internet's not going to be happy with me, but we are, we are still currently receiving less from the state than we received in 2009. So, we're almost 10 years out, and we're receiving significantly less than we received almost 10 years ago. Ah, there we go, school funding data. Right now, I think it's, since Governor Christie took office, it's over $8 million that we have been, that we have lost in state aid cumulatively.
Does that mean how much we're underfunded by, according to the formula, the SFRA or whatever it is?
Yes, by the School Funding Reform Act, yeah, SFRA. So, if we had been fully funded according to SFRA, yeah, so now we're at $7.2 million is our cumulative underfunding since 2009. And just this year alone, we're underfunded by $400,000. So, this $200,000 that we're getting is not even half of what we should have received just this year. So, what that's done is over this last nine, eight years of Governor Christie's budgets, we have had to go out to the taxpayers more. There, I mean, there's no other way to, you know, there's no other way to put it, that's, that's the stark reality of it. So, you know, the governor can give us less money, the governor can put a 2% cap on what we're able to raise our, raise the property taxes, but the money has to come from somewhere without gutting programs, without laying off staff, without all of these things. So, and we are now in a position, going into next year's budget, which as we discussed a little bit earlier, you know, this year's budget, we are putting things on the table like not having a sub in every classroom, because we're going line by line through the budget, looking for places we can cut, and there aren't any places left, like they're just there, without layoffs, without cutting programs, there isn't any place else to take from. So, you know, the, the idea that we would give money back at this point as a, as a nod to the taxpayer, you know, my argument to that would be, our nod to the taxpayer is those hours and days that we spend poring over every line of the budget to see where we can cut any amount of money, I mean, this 30,000 to 40,000, that's what's stuck in my head, I hope I'm right, for these subs, you know, those were the kinds of things that we took out, you know, so that we didn't have to go to the taxpayers for that additional 30, 40, and we were constantly looking for those little chunks that we could not spend so that we didn't have to go. And actually, this year, even if we had wanted to, we couldn't, because we're, we're now, we've got the 2% cap, and then you have the banked cap, you know, and these are all things that we kind of learned through this process, right? You know, Governor, because all this, all these laws were passed, and then, you know, you're like, "Oh, I have a 2% cap, you can't go above a 2% cap." Oh, well, actually, you can, you know, but nobody had figured that out until a couple of years later, because at first, everybody was too terrified to like even come near the 2% cap, because, you know, Governor Christie had, you know, suggested that people vote down their budgets, and like, just all these crazy things had been happening. So, so then, you know, a couple of years later, when districts are just absolutely strapped and can't make ends meet anymore, they had to start going above those 2% caps. They had to start going to them, then they had to start going over them, using their bank cap, using the waivers that the state provides. And now, we've done that for the last, I think, five or, five or, five years? We've used those bank caps, we've used those waivers, and now they're gone, they're gone. So, we're not going to have that even to rely on next year. So, by the time we get to next year's budget, now, yes, next year, we have a new governor. We don't know who that's going to be yet, you know? We don't know even if it's, you know, either side of the aisle that lands on, that we don't know that that means that that's going to mean more money is going to be coming from Trenton. There's just too many question marks. So, you know, to my mind, this $200,000 gets absorbed into the budget, and we find ways to use it. And if we don't use it this year, then that will get moved to next year's budget to help deal with that crisis that we're going to be dealing with next year, which is, now we're, we have that 2% cap and maybe a tiny waiver for healthcare costs, and that's it. And then there's not going to be anywhere else to go. So, one, one idea that has been kind of tossed out is, one of the things that we have budgeted over the, or we've been hoping to budget over the next few years, is to get ourselves to the point where all of the buildings are air-conditioned. And we put, what was it that we put towards that, towards that this year, do you remember? It was like, yeah, it was somewhere, right, and so we were kind of hoping to be able to do that over the next few years. If we could put a majority of this towards that this year, even maybe put half of it, I mean, I think Mark's idea was maybe we put half of that towards that at the beginning of this year, and then we leave the other half of it to see how we do going through the year, if, and one thing Mark and Linda have been doing as we go through the year, and we've been looking at in finance, is how, how are we doing on the budget? Are we, you know, do we have $500,000 left? Do we have $600,000 left? Do we have seven? Because, you know, we all know we can't run at a deficit at any point, so we can't, we can't overspend what we have, so we're constantly kind of looking at what our expenses have been so far, and what do we have left, and, so if we see by the end of the year that we're doing well, it looks like we have a fair amount of money to be able to move over into the 18, 19 budget, then maybe we could use the other half of that money to do more of that air conditioning work. As you all know, this year, we had to cancel half a day of classes because of temperatures, and there's other days where, you know, probably wouldn't have been a bad idea, and Keith, you may be in some of those classrooms where it's not so fun to be in, and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not really a suitable learning or working environment for our students and for our staff. So, you know, on those days, I feel...
Not a luxury, it's not a luxury.
No, it is, it's not, yeah. And, you know, I have to say, you know, as the Board President, when I'm at home, I feel like I need, I should turn off my machine, like, you know, if I'm sending my kids in there and we're sending the teachers in there, you know, we should all be at home, like, taking one for the team too, so, you know...
And I could tell you that it means I have one less decision I have to make about inclement weather. I mean, as you recall, we had a recent heat wave, and many of my peers had to shut, shut school down or call a half a day. I stayed open, but it was a call I had to make, and this would definitely ease that burden.
So, you know, I don't know if anybody around the table has any other ideas or thoughts about that idea, or if you do, now's the time to...
$15 to hand back to the taxpayers, you know, myself being one of them, it's kind of like, nah, keep it, you know, if you can do something, if you can do something to make an investment that returns back more than $15 in terms of my, you know, property tax or property value, then clearly, you know, keeping the money and investing it into the schools to raise property tax value seems like the more fiscally responsible thing to do, rather than make a hollow gesture, you know, with $15. I think that that's, that's kind of what it amounts to, and it really is a hollow gesture. I mean, we, we are underfunded by 8 million, you said, so 200,000 in light of that seems like insulting.
I think, I also think, if I could just add to what I earlier said was, is that I do think we should, as Darcy is suggesting, earmark it to specific important projects that we have needed to do, that we have been unable to do, as opposed to simply kind of letting it sit in our budget and then just, and I'm not going to use the word waste, because it's not a matter of wasting, but it's a matter of, it would get spent, and I don't want to see that happen. I think it would be, it would be great if we can, you know, do that.
Well, these are projects that we've been talking about doing as long as I've been on the board, and it always takes a backseat, because we need more computers for the park, or we need more, you know, like, there's always something that supersedes it, and very often, not things that are necessarily even a district priority, but things, we're just told we have to, you have to do this, you have to do that, you have to, like, you know, without any additional money from the state. So, those are hundreds of thousands of dollars that we've had to spend, because we've been told that we have to spend them. Now, a miniscule fraction of that money is coming back to us, this has been, as long as I've been on the board, this has been one of the items that has been at, one of the top of the list, but is always one of the first ones to go, because, because it doesn't, I mean, it does impact instruction, we have to close school, but, you know, it's not a staff member, it's not a program, it's not a, so, so, it gets, that gets my vote. I mean, my, my strong feeling is that we hold on to the money, we earmark it towards that, and I liked Mark's idea of kind of splitting it up, doing some of the work at the beginning of the year, doing some of it, then holding off, seeing how, seeing how we're looking, and then if, if we're looking okay, then doing it toward, the rest of it towards the end of the year.
Yeah.
So, okay, so if that sounds agreeable to everyone, I'll have Dr. Taylor let the mayor know tomorrow that we plan on holding on to those funds, and she can go ahead and send out those tax bills. Okay, thank you, everybody. Does anybody else have any thoughts, or, no, okay. So, we had one item on the, on old business, old business for the tracking book study, did you want to...
Yeah, I'll say, I'll say a few words about that, and I also wanted to add an item to old business regarding re-registration. So, as I pointed out, the leadership team is going to be engaging in a book study. We haven't chosen the book yet, I have four we're looking at, one in particular that's more for practitioners, to examine best practices in different schools around the country that detract. But I would like to come back to Darcy's suggestion from a couple of months ago, that the board also take up a book study. I'm not sure how, I'm not sure what it would look like come September, if that's when we were to, would start the book study, but I would think it'd be helpful for the, at least the leadership team and the board to get together and compare notes. I proposed to Darcy, and we discussed this a couple of days ago, that the leadership team read its book, and the board read a book maybe more around policy, and then we compare notes, combine the practice with the policy. So, that's all, I just wanted to put that seed out there, and then I think Darcy and I'll end up discussing the details soon. Maybe ahead of the August 21st meeting, we could have something in place.
Sounds good to me.
The second old business item, which is not on the agenda, I did tell the board I would follow up to give you an idea of how we're looking in terms of re-registration, so I have some numbers to share with you. All told, at Bartle, there were two grades that we asked families and guardians connected to, to come re-register. That totaled 252 families, guardians, that we asked to re-register. We had a little more than half re-register as of May 23rd, at the end of May 23rd, 24th registration session, we still had 107 families and guardians of that 252 at Bartle who did not re-register. The number dwindled a little bit since May 23rd, 24th, they were down to 97. All those families and guardians are getting letters, and if they still don't respond by August, we're going to be making phone calls. At the middle school, we also had two grades re-register for a total of 231 students. 116 were re-registered by the end of the May 23rd, 24th session, then that number went down by eight, so there remain 108 students not re-registered. Again, letters, letters have actually gone out, and we'll follow up with calls if we don't get word back from, from those folks. And at the high school, there was only one grade, grade 10, that we asked to re-register, there were 130 students in that grade, 52 did not re-register by the end of the May session, and then since then, another, we picked up another five, so we're down to 47. So, if you do the numbers, we've got about 200, I should have told this up previously, about 250 remaining families and guardians who have to, who still re-register.
And so, is that being handled at the building level?
Correct. So, each, so each of the building secretaries sent out the letters, and then those building secretaries will follow up with calls after we get the letter sometime.
All right, can I just make one comment? I heard from a parent of an out-of-district student who received a letter but hadn't received any previous communication regarding re-registration, and if you're a parent of a kid who is out of district, you're not looking on the website, you're not paying attention to what's going on in district, which is an issue in itself, that we're trying to resolve, hopefully through, you know, CPAC working with Susie to try and, and better that communication, and I've brought that up several times, but they had absolutely no idea.
Well, we did send letters to the out-of-district families, guardians, in this case, obviously, we, we made a mistake, but, but I guess at least we have, our second level is at least getting out there.
But it also highlights the importance of keeping that communication open, because
But it also highlights the importance of keeping that communication open, because I know that we also really want to work on bringing those kids back into district in, you know, in any way, shape, or form. So even if it is in a social way, so that they can, you know, be part of our athletic program or something like that, I think we need to, you know, make that part of our agenda on a constant basis to try and connect those families to our schools in a much more efficient manner.
Yep.
And so what protocol gets put in place if a family just doesn't respond to letters, phone calls?
Well, we're telling families and guardians that we can't produce a child's schedule until we have that student re-registered, but the reality is, we're going to allow that child to start school, if. However, if the child comes to school, the student hasn't been re-registered, and I'm, we're hoping we're down to just a handful at that point. We may have to investigate further, which means we send a more formal letter that Jonathan Bush helped me craft. And then the next step could be, and this is something I'd have to explore with the board, actually having an investigation, investigator go out, take photos.
Because districts do have attendance officers, I mean, you know, and that's one of the roles that attendance officers play, is they make those...
Actually make home visits.
Make those follow-ups.
I don't know if the board saw the news lately, but Bridgewater is one of two districts that went all the way to the commissioner's level and actually won cases against families and guardians who just never did their, did that do. I think South Brunswick, South Brunswick and Bridgewater, I believe are the two districts in that case, so. But like, if you read the articles, at least one case, yeah, they had their own internal attendance person go out and do that work. In my previous district, we hired a private eye to actually go out at 5:30 a.m. and take photos of, sit in a van, take photos of people's homes.
We can take turns doing it. We can, Darcy's face, I don't know.
So, but I'll tell you what, I'll report again to the board in about a month, at the next board meeting. Just keep you abreast of how we're doing.
Okay. Great. Does anybody else have anything for old business?
This isn't old business, I'm sorry. I'm just, it just popped into my head. Are we going to meet to do our board goals at any point during this?
So why don't we talk about that now? We'll talk about that and now under new business.
Okay.
I don't have, I have not, in my head, formulated a plan for that yet. We've kind of had so many balls up in the air that just has not, that has not been at the forefront of my mind. But we do need to take a look at that at some point, so I don't know if we want to put that on the agenda for next month to even just have a curse, you know, a conversation about it, just about looking at our goals, seeing if we want, we do want to earmark a time to, you know, revamp them at another meeting. So we're like a little behind on that, but it's not the end of the world.
Well, actually, going into September, as I update the strategic plan, it might be helpful if you're receptive to it that we do what we did last year. I point out the priority items, and then we look at those items.
That'd be great.
So I'll prepare that for the next meeting.
Okay.
Great.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Okay. Does anybody else have anything for new business? No? No, no, no? Okay. So then, public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes Keith's participation and has reserved this time for his comments.
It's nice how you give me all this opportunity. Keith, President, HBA President. I might have said some of this before, but now that it's really official, and I didn't get to do it last time because I think it was at the end of your meeting, but I just want to thank the entire board for ratifying the contract. And I think it's really important for especially the public to know that what a great process it was this time around. It was, you know, it was actually fun at some times, and, you know, we did it in five meetings, and this is a district that historically has gone way extended past a contract and had to go to mediation almost every time. So I just think it says a lot about where we are right now with just the board and the association and the community, and we're in a very different place than we were a couple of years ago, and it's a really nice place to be.
Amen.
So again, just extending from all of the association, a thank you that we are able to work together like this to produce great stuff.
Right. Thank you, and the reverse from the board to the association. We really appreciated the whole process. It was, it was amazing, having gone through it in previous iterations to now, you know, this is the way it should be, you know? Both parties goes to the table in good faith, conversations happen, and you hopefully end up at the end where you're in a place where, you know, everybody feels like they've engaged in a productive process. It seems like that's what happened here. So for all of the negotiation team members, thank you very much, and to all, same to your team as well, please extend our thanks to them.
I think it's important for the public to know as well that the association was very sensitive to the, to our budget woes. This was not a year, nobody in the public should be misled into thinking that this was sort of giveaway time for the school board. I mean, the association was really critically aware of how little money we have and gave up a lot, and, you know, we gave up some on our side. So this was, you know, both sides made compromises, and it was difficult, and it stayed civil, and we really appreciate that.
Yay for civil.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. On that note, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
[inaudible]